We are live again.
Hello, everyone. The Select Board is now returning to open session following executive session. It is now 7:36 PM and we will resume with item number one, which is public comment. If you are participating remotely, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom. To raise your hand, click reactions on the meeting toolbar and select raise hand from the menu. To lower your hand, click reactions again and select lower hand. Is there any public comments?
Did everyone in the waiting room get let in?
I'm sorry?
There were some in the waiting room.
No, Patrick said thumbs up, yep. Anybody? No? Okay, then. All right, then we will move on to item number two, which is the Massachusetts Commercial Property Assessed Clean Energy Program. Do we have a guest? I think we do.
Yep.
Is it Connor?
Hi, yep.
Yes, I'm here. How's everybody doing tonight?
Very well. How are you?
Hello, Connor. Doing well, thanks. I can share my screen to queue up the presentation slide I have. Just bear with me for one moment. Can everybody see that?
Mm-hmm, yep.
All right, so I know we're pressed for time, so I won't go word by word for all these slides. But I'm Connor Glassheen. I work with Mass Development. We're the Commonwealth Development Finance Agency and Land Bank, and we work with businesses, nonprofits, financial institutions, and communities to stimulate economic growth through the number of different programs that we manage at Mass Development. And one of those programs is Property Assessed Clean Energy, known as PACE or CPACE, which stands for Commercial Property Assessed Clean Energy. And what PACE allows is for commercial property owners to access financing for energy improvements or for new construction projects, and it is repaid via a special betterment assessment on the property tax bill. So it's a voluntary program that municipalities in Massachusetts can join, which brings me here tonight to see if Northborough wants to become the 81st community to join the CPACE program here. The benefits for municipalities, you know, job creation, attract new and retaining existing business, environmental benefits associated with reducing the energy consumption of the property. For property owners, it's the financing is long-term, non-recourse financing. There's no new debt on the balance sheet, and there's no required payoff upon sale of the property. If that happens, the assessments run to the new owners. And for the lenders and the mortgages, you know, improves their cash flow and reduce credit risk from lower operating costs from financing that cannot be accelerated. There is a national commercial PACE market as well. We're not the only state that has this program. Right now, 32 states plus DC have it, 40 states have enabling legislation. And as of June of this year, 9.7 billion has been financed for over 3,500 projects. And that graph just shows the CPACE dollars funded by building type, with hospitality, office, and retail being the top three building sectors that utilize CPACE financing. I won't go through this whole slide either, but in New England, there's other states. Obviously, New England has CPACE programs. I'll just highlight Connecticut has been doing it since 2011. So CPACE is pretty popular in the New England region as well. Our program launched in 2020. It was originally only a retrofit program, so only existing buildings could apply for CPACE financing. And then in May of 2023, new construction also became eligible for CPACE financing. Mass Development is the program administrator, and we also work in consultation with the Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources, or the DOER. There's a lot more information of it, including our approval requirements, financing documents, an RFI for capital providers, all on our website under the green finance section. That includes our PACE guidelines. Currently, we're on version 2.1, and they were last updated in March 2025. This slide is called the PACE Flow of Funds. So all the funds are from private capital providers. There is no public financing or funds used in our program. They extend the financing all upfront to the property owner, and they are repaid via that betterment assessment, which is collected by the local municipality. So the property owner installs the new energy improvements, or if it's a new construction development, and they start to pay that betterment assessment. And it usually gets tailored to the cadence of however the local municipality does the property taxes. So, for example, if a town does it quarterly for their property taxes, there'd be four payments every year for that PACE property. And the max repayment period is 20 years, so four payments for 20 years in that example. The municipality would bill and collect it in that schedule, and then they send it to our paying agent. The paying agent is Zion's Bank. Zion's Bank receives the payment from the town, and then they disperse the betterment assessment back to the original capital provider that provided the financing to begin with.
Connor, can I interrupt you for a second on that one?
Yeah, sure.
Can you go back to the flow of funds?
Yep.
So can you take us through an example of, like, if I were a commercial entity and I wanted to do some improvements to my building? So I do the energy improvements, and then how does the money flow exactly?
So first, the property owner would need to submit an application to Mass Development and to DOER. We review the application and sign off on it. It also needs the sign off from the DOER to proceed before the financing can be given. Once we get the DOER technical approval, we'd reach out to the local town saying, you have a project, you know, that has received an application, it's been given approval. And then we would work with the town, you know, if it's their first time doing a PACE transaction, you know, make sure all, like, the ins and outs are all accounted for. The financing, that's separate, so the property owner, either if they have a relationship with an existing bank or a local bank, they can be a PACE lender. Or if it's one of our 17 PACE lender organizations that re-registered, they come to a financing agreement. They get the financing all upfront, so whatever the cost of the project is or the cost of improvements, the property owner gets that money. And then the repayment schedule, depending on when the deal closes, like, you know, there's a certain cutoff period, I know, from municipalities, like, for when you guys are preparing the property tax bills. So like, if it's before that kind of period, it can start, I think, you know, like, for example, if we close a deal today in Northborough, it wouldn't start repaying until, I think, February of 2027. There'd be like a big leeway kind of time there, depending on when that cutoff period is. But basically, like I said, the financing's all given upfront in total to the property owner. And then whenever kind of it triggers on the property tax cycle, like, in Mass Development, we'd send a notification to the town saying the payment schedule's, like, you know, going to start imminently. And we also retain a betterment assessment consultant called Municap that could work with the town if they need some assistance. Depending on what software you guys use, I know I met with town staff previously, and I forget which, you guys use Munis or a different type of software.
Munis, yeah.
But if you guys are unfamiliar with how to do betterment assessments, we can engage the Municap Betterment Assessment Consultant, and that's something that Mass Development pays for. It's no cost to the town as well. So that's kind of how the process works, if that answered your question.
Connor, what is the interest rate typically?
Good question. It's pretty much a market rate interest rate. There's no set interest rate for, like, PACE financing. It's better than, like, mezzanine financing, but it's, you know, a pretty competitive interest rate with what we're seeing with traditional financing. Usually, the projects that we get, PACE is kind of like, it's a unique form of financing to begin with. And given that too, and the fact that it doesn't show up as debt on the balance sheet, usually, projects come to us if they've kind of exhausted their traditional lending opportunities. Not always, but like, that's part of the attractive part of PACE is that it's non-recourse, no new debt on the balance sheet debt. So I can't give you, like, there's not like one set number, but, you know, somewhere between the 7% to 8% range, I'd say, with the market showing right now.
Okay, thanks.
And just to test, you got a question?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Just to test my understanding, going to play on Julian's example. So let's say that Northborough becomes a PACE community, and we do a project, and we have a property assessed at $10 million that pays $160,000 a year in taxes. They go through the lifecycle to get this done. What is their assessment or property taxes paid to Northborough after this is all done? Is there any impact at all?
I mean, depending on what the project is, because I know, like, there's a whole list of what are eligible costs for retrofit projects, you know, like, you know, if they do building envelope improvements or solar installation, things like that. If that could increase, I guess, the assessed value of the property maybe in theory? Is that like your question?
Well, I guess, not really understanding the betterment piece. I guess my question was, is there any aspect of Northborough subsidizing this project for any party at all, for the company that decides to do this? Do they get lower assessments, or is there anything that's subsidized by the town in some form?
Oh, no, no, no. There's no, like, cost to the town or anything like that. There's no added benefit where, like, they would, you know, the town would basically be on the hook financially for anything like this. It's basically, the part of PACE is, like I said, that makes it attractive to businesses, is that it's non, you can't accelerate the financing, for one. It's, like I said, it's long-term financing, a fixed 20-year by statute, the repayment period. It's non-recourse, which means that in the event of a default, it can't be accelerated. Only the unpaid billed amount can be pursued in that scenario. And like I said, it's essentially treated as like a real estate tax, so it doesn't show up as any new debt on their balance sheet. So there's no added benefit where, like, the town would be subsidizing anything like that for the project.
Thank you.
Can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, piggybacking on Mr. Ray's question. So let's say you have a property that's worth $10 million, and they're going to do a $5 million improvement. And I understand that $5 million of improvement isn't always going to turn into $5 million of property value, according to our assessor's office, but it's certainly going to increase the assessed value of the property by some amount. I think what you're saying, and I'm just trying to confirm that we're hearing it right, is the assessed value is going to go up, whatever the assessed value is. We will still collect 100% of the property tax, regardless of the financing source of the development was. It's just on top of that, they will have a separate line item on their bill for betterment, which doesn't say, well, since you're paying this betterment, you get to pay less assessed value. Like, that would be, that's not how it would be.
Yeah, correct. They're totally separate. Basically, how it shows up on the property taxes, like, it's its own separate line item for the special betterment assessment. It's basically like, if you guys do water or sewer betterment assessments, that's kind of just how it would show up. It would show up as like the PACE betterment assessment on the property tax. So they obviously pay their property tax first, and then on top of that, they're repaying the financing through the betterment process. And then that gets sent back via our paying agent Zion's Bank to the original capital provider. So what you said is correct. They don't kind of intermingle the two separate parts of the property tax bill.
And then relatedly, I think the answer is no, but I don't know unless I ask. There's no, like, points that the town gets, share of the loan proceeds, anything like that?
No, right, currently, as written in the statute, no, there's no mechanism for the town to kind of take any kind of fee or anything like that.
I mean, that would take it back to your bosses and the legislators. That would make it way more attractive to a town, because we're essentially being a debt collector for the bank, which takes time and work and money. And you're going to say, well, we're getting is maybe a development we wouldn't have gotten otherwise. I hear that, but I'm just saying.
Sure.
A point of the loan proceeds would be.
Mass Development, we want to work with our local partners, things like that. So we'll always be engaged with the town in any PACE transaction to alleviate the burden as much as we can on town staff, as well as, as I said, that betterment assessment consultant that we retain, that Mass Development completely pays for, so you won't get, you know, a surprise bill from us or anything like that, saying you also owe for the consultant. So we try our best to ease that burden on any town staff. And then I also will bring it back to my original point where I'm saying PACE is a very unique form of financing. So once, let's say, you guys opt to vote into the program, you're not going to see, like, based off all the other 80 communities we have, it's not like the floodgates are going to open, you're going to get, we will get inundated by applications. Like, for example, the city of Boston's been in the program for a number of years, and we have two deals closed in Boston. And we do have a pipeline of deals to go there, but it's, you know, if you look at the size of, you know, Boston's commercial real estate portfolio, it's not that many projects. So we're still kind of in our, not infancy, we're in our adolescence with the PACE program and trying to, you know, try and grow the program. I think our first priority right now is, like I said, to grow, because, you know, there's 351 towns, and right now, we have 80. So that conversation could definitely open up in the future. I'm not closing the door to it, but as currently written by, yeah, the state statute, it's not possible right now.
Thanks.
One more question.
Thanks, I'm sure. Yeah, thanks, Connor. Question, just from looking at everything, I think I know the answer. But, right, a municipal-owned property or building isn't eligible for any of these benefits, correct? Wouldn't make sense with the way the project is, okay. And then under eligible measures, energy efficiency, there are boilers and furnaces listed. Does that include gas and heating oil-fired boilers and furnaces?
So like, basically, it's like, for energy efficiency, it's like if you're replacing a boiler or furnace, it's eligible. Right now, there is a pathway for fossil fuel still kind of to be a component of building systems. There are additional kind of conditions, basically, if you, on our technical guidelines, the DOER is written. So there is a pathway for what we call mixed-fuel buildings that incorporate some type of fossil fuel. But like I said, usually, they have to get, like, passive house certification or some type of high-standard energy efficiency certification to become eligible if there's going to be a use of fossil fuels. But usually, on the energy efficiency side, it's like if they're replacing these, you know, fossil fuel boilers, furnaces, systems like that to replace them.
Okay. And then do you, outside of this, just a random question. For the, like, the heat loan program, are residents still eligible through that program for gas-fired furnace replacement and eligible and positive loan terms? Or is it?
Do you mean, are residential properties?
Right, like a residential property. Yeah, I mean, I assume they wouldn't be eligible for PACE, but.
Right now, residents, is it not, we don't have a residential PACE program. Some states do, which you may have seen. We do, there is kind of, in Massachusetts, if a building has five or more units, it's considered a commercial property. So like, in those instances, residences did qualify for CPACE, but like I said, they have to be the five units or more to qualify.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I guess my question is, and about to do more research on my end, is just, I wonder if there's opportunities for larger structures through this program that have either been taken away or not eligible for residents, so, thank you.
Yeah, sure, like I said, I know, like I said, some states are exploring that, or some have already implemented a residential PACE program. Like this program, it would take an act of the legislature to enact a residential component to it.
Any other questions at this time? Okay, thank you.
No, no, it's great, all great questions, too. I know we kind of just touched upon this, but the eligible property types, so obviously, new construction or existing. The most common are commercial and industrial buildings. Non-for-profits can qualify. I know we had a question about municipal or government-owned buildings, but non-for-profits can qualify. Usually, there are pathways, if there's already a pilot agreement with the local town or city, so a payment in lieu of taxes, or if the town or the city has the ability to generate a property tax bill for the nonprofit and put, like, you know, $0 basically for the property tax, just so that the PACE betterment assessment can be added as its own byline. And then, as just mentioned, the multifamily housing, apartment complexes of five or more units. I'm sorry, I didn't realize this was in the way. Apartment complexes of five or more units can qualify for CPACE. And then the eligible measures, this isn't the whole list. These are just the most common, I'd say. The whole list is on our technical guidelines document, which if you go onto Mass Development's website, under the green finance page, you can find that. But like I said, we just like to list kind of the more popular ones. On the renewable energy side, get a lot of increase for solar panels, solar hot water, geothermal, and so on. The next couple of slides are all kind of case studies. I won't go, like, I know we're pressed for time. But this was the first PACE deal that was done. It was out in Greenfield. It was an existing building. They did energy efficiency improvements. This was a deal in Boston, another existing property. Again, did energy improvements. They also did a new roof. I'll qualify, a new roof can qualify for CPACE financing if it's solar-ready or for solar installation. Slightly larger financing amount than the previous project. Then another Boston project over by the airport, another cargo ventures property, kind of a large mixed-use facility. Again, similar energy efficiency improvements, as well as building envelope upgrades, an air ceiling, and new windows, and door weatherization. Just over 1.1 million in financing. This was the most recent deal we did, down in New Bedford, a seafood processing and distribution facility. This was strictly a solar installation project. Again, just over 1.1 million in financing. So the key elements, a lot of your questions touched upon this. Obviously, the first and foremost is municipal opt-in. It's a one-time vote of the Select Board or the City Council in the town to join PACE. The maximum financing term allowed is 20 years. That's based on the dependent useful life of the project measures. There is an energy cost savings requirement for some project pathway. So for any existing building, currently, the guidelines require energy cost savings must exceed the cost of improvements, including any financing costs and associated fees. So it's what's known as an SIR, which is a savings-to-investment ratio. So any retrofit project needs to kind of pass that calculation. And the DOER kind of reviews the energy paperwork and information that's submitted, and they sign off on that. If the property is sold, the remaining PACE assessment and PACE lien stays with the property and transfers to the new owner. There is a retroactive consideration for installed improvements. And like I said before, it's all third-party, direct, private financing. No public funds are used. And right now, we have 17 organizations that we've registered, and we still have an open, ongoing RFI on our website for any new PACE lenders. And also, like I said, I might have mentioned it, but traditional kind of brick-and-mortar banks can be a PACE lender, too. They don't really need to go through the registration process. They just basically need to send us a letter saying that they're interested in being a PACE lender, and it's very easy. So if a property owner has, like, a relationship with a local bank, it's very easy for them to become a PACE lender. The PACE application has to be approved by DOER and Mass Development for financing to close. Also, the mortgage holder's written consent is required. So the deal can't go forward without the mortgage holder's written consent. You may have noticed on the case study slides, we noted who the mortgage holders were. A couple of them were Berkshire Bank, another was like People's United Bank, M&amp;T Banks. We have a good, there's a good few banks that have already consented to PACE deals in Massachusetts, and they're pretty familiar with the program at this point. The betterment assessment and PACE lien is placed at closing. Mass Development's council prepares all the closing documents and handles the recording at the registry. The lien is assigned to the town, then assigned to Mass Development, and then to the capital provider. And then the capital provider holds enforcement rights to pursue remedies in a default. If this happens, PACE cannot be accelerated. It's only the unpaid billed assessments that can be pursued in a default. And the municipal liens are senior to the PACE lien. PACE lien is senior to the private mortgage lien. So that's why the mortgage holder has sort of consent, because they take a junior position behind the municipality and behind the PACE lien if a default occurs. And then as of today, these are our 80 authorizing PACE municipalities. Bill Ricco is number 80, and I just met with Hatfield's Select Board last week. So it either could be Northborough or Hatfield. At this point, could be number 1, but, sorry, number 81. Here, they all are listed alphabetically, and then we just have a map. All the green communities, obviously, are the PACE communities. This show that we have a pretty good geographic spread going, but as you could see, we still have our work cut out for us to be, basically, do the PACE roadshow across Massachusetts. And this is just the final kind of slide here, wrapping up. This is a crazy slide that the councils prepared, and they like for us to include it. But it's the commercial PACE structure. It shows all the different kind of entities that are involved in a PACE transaction, how we all interact with each other, who's responsible for what for a PACE transaction. And then finally, is just our team. We're a pretty small team. Wendy O'Malley is our team leader. She helped basically create the PACE program here in Massachusetts. And I'm joined by our colleague, Rob Dolan. He covers the greater Boston South region of the state for green finance. And I cover the West, Central, and North regions. But like I said, we're a small team. We all pretty much support each other. Yeah, and that's basically the presentation. I'm happy to circle back on any slides or answer any questions that you may have or any comments.
Thank you, Connor, and thank you for doing it as speedily as you were able to do. I'm going to ask the board now if they have any other questions for you.
I have one. I just wanted to make sure I'm clear, so covered a lot. What are two drawbacks for a town to do PACE in terms of what the town needs to do that maybe they didn't have to do before, so I'm clear what that is? It could mean more than two.
I guess the drawbacks, to put it that way, is this basically, like, the additional, for a deal that comes through, it's the additional work. I guess they have to, you know, work with the property owner and the Municap or Betterment Assessment Consultant to make sure that the PACE assessments, like, you know, being billed and collected timely. So I guess there is that additional effort. But I will, like I said, caveat that we're not foreseeing, you know, a huge amount of workload that's going to come on if Northborough opts in. There won't be a huge burden of work put on the staff. We did have, we do have an initial kind of inquiry from a business about PACE. They have not officially applied, I'll note. But there has been at least someone that's approached us about their interest in pursuing CPACE. And that's kind of what kicked off the conversation with the town staff. So I met with Stephanie and her team to kind of brief them, give them the same presentation, and answer their questions. So usually, we don't like to move forward without kind of getting that staff support and kind of showing them the program. And like I said, we're, you know, we're Mass Development. We partner with local towns and cities. So we're not going anywhere either. So it's not like you guys will be left to your own devices to figure this all out if it goes forward. But I would say that's probably maybe the biggest drawback, I guess, is that there is additional effort required of town staff for any PACE transaction. But I'd say it's pretty minimal, from my experience.
And then PACE is allowed for retrofit and new construction now? Did I hear that correctly?
Yes, so yeah, new construction is available for financing as well.
Is the interested party disclosed, or no?
They haven't applied yet, so I can't disclose yet. But like I said, they kind of just, I think, are exploring their financing options, and they must have come across PACE somewhere, and they reached out to us, and they noticed that the town had not opted in. So we said we'd start the conversations with the town. But like I said, since they haven't officially applied yet, I can't disclose which company or entity it is.
Great, thanks.
Connor, you may have covered this, but let's just say there's an instance where the property owner, you know, goes through the whole thing, they get the loan, and they're not able to make the payments, or their property tax, or maybe just the...
Yeah, I think, yeah, so are you talking about if they, you know, like a default scenario, essentially?
Yes.
So yeah, so if that happens, we haven't had it happen yet. But if that happens, the capital provider, like I said, it says here, holds the enforcement rights to pursue remedies in a default. But it's not the whole financing amount that can be kind of collected. It's only the unpaid billed assessments that can be pursued. And in the scenario where if there's a default and they're not paying their property tax, let's say, the municipality takes precedence. You get, the town of Northborough gets paid first. You get what's owed to you first before anyone else gets paid. If they're not also delinquent on their property taxes, it's basically up to the capital provider if they want to start that whole kind of process. And then if it does, it kind of follows the foreclosure process. And I know I'm not familiar with, you know, Massachusetts, like, foreclosure laws and things like that. But it would kind of go through that similar process, or that foreclosure process, if it does get to that point.
All right. Well, any other questions, any discussion? I wonder if it's worth having a conversation with our tax department before we vote on this?
Yeah, Connor, we could reach out to you again regarding the process and what, you know, our accounting or Treasury Department, what would be expected of them?
Like, the work.
No, happy to have, I can have any follow-up conversations or meetings with any folks that you guys think is the best way to go forward. I'm happy to do that.
Great, thank you so much.
Okay, I think that's going to be our next step, and maybe call a couple of the other towns and see what the workload is at our end. But it was very nice having you.
Yeah, no, thank you for letting me join, especially thank you for letting me join remotely. I very much appreciate that. And like I said, if there's any follow-up questions or anything else that you guys need... need, I'm happy to be of assistance.
Great, okay. Thank you so much.
Take care, thank you.
All right. So next on the agenda is...
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I don't know if we'd be open to it, but maybe moving up item five, the chief's retirement acceptance of resignation. I don't know how much maybe discussion there was, if we maybe moved it up and had a vote?
Because...
Well, I mean, the chief's been patiently waiting there, even though he's, he's in his Patriots garb as a Giants fan, I'm still willing to, I know, still, you know, wondering if we go ahead and move his agenda item up. Maybe we could let him go a little early.
Well, we do have Ally waiting, I saw, which is the next item, and Scott is waiting. How does the rest of you feel about that?
I'd just rather get going with whatever we're going with so that we can get them all out of here.
Same.
I mean, I'm happy to do she first. I don't mind, but someone's waiting either way.
Yeah, I, if you don't mind, we'll stick to the order. Okay, all right. So the next is the request to designate certain recreation department positions as special municipal employee roles. So do we have, hi, Ally.
Hi, how are you guys?
Good, how are you? So this is a follow-up.
Good. Thank you for seeing me again. I just wanted to follow up with our, with your last meeting when I came in to talk with you. I know you guys had several questions. Basically, we went to town council, asked all of your questions, we did some investigating, so I just wanted to get back to you on those answers. So if we were to hire a special municipal employee, it is not pensionable, so it will not go on their pensions. At this point, I will be paying them overtime. That is definitely a necessity, and nothing needs to change in any of the bylaws that we were speaking about.
Clarifying question?
I believe Stephanie gave you guys the email from town council with all of these answers ahead of time.
Yeah, I did. Well, I emailed it at least to you.
I don't think I've seen it.
It's right here, actually.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah.
I have a quick question, Ally. What I remember, please keep me honest, what I remember was that the example you were used is, wow, it's really hard to get employees in the summer to work, and these programs have a big surge in the summer. I guess the, the overtime piece isn't obvious to me. What I heard is these teachers are off in the summer.
Correct. It would not be overtime in the summer, just during the school year.
So there's a need in the summer and the school year?
Yes. I'm looking to hire someone over the school year as well to run programs. And I did talk to a few of the teachers, and most of them are 35 hours a week. So if I'm looking to hire them for one or two hours, it would not need to be overtime. But if they do work over 40 hours, then I would need to pay overtime. The summer does not count because they're not working 40 hours a week.
If I can say that differently to make sure I understand, so essentially, you would take however many hours of working as their normal employee job, and you need to add the number of hours that they're working as a special employee to make sure we're qualifying, complying with wage and hour law on the combined number of hours?
Correct.
Which potentially, if we're borrowing a Southborough person who we're not necessarily employing, then we don't have to care about how many hours we're, I mean, we care as people, but as far as the law's concerned, we're not caring about overtime because we're not employing them. Is that right? I'm not trying to be harsh.
No, that's correct. Just like I could go out and get a second job, as long as it's not working for the town of Northborough. So a Southborough teacher can work as many hours as they want with me, as long as it's not affecting their teaching job.
Okay, so that's great.
So that is the difference.
So we're opening up our ability to employ more of our own people who are already employing, which I see as a plus, with the risk that in some cases, there may be overtime for a full-time teacher who's already at 40 or close to 40, who needs to do this during the school year, and then over the summer, that's not an issue. Is that a good summary?
Correct.
Okay.
And then the other thing I, I think I heard was that the cost would be the same, non-overtime cost would be the same for an employee that you hired during the summer to call it a student versus a teacher, that, that would be the same wage, not overtime...
It depends on the job.
Okay, that's different than I remember.
Do you know what I mean? So each job description has a wage associated to it. So if I had a teacher apply to be a camp counselor, they would get the same amount, except for the fact that they might have more experience than a high schooler. But normally, you're not going to get an adult to apply for minimum wage jobs. So last year, we employed an art teacher, and she made $25 an hour. This year, we're going to be looking for a new one, and I'd love to try and ask, you know, the art teachers that work in Northborough. So that's, you know, it, technically, each job description has a wage, so it would follow that whether they were a high school kid or a teacher.
Do you have a schedule with those job descriptions and the wages like we see with other departments?
Yes, I'm Schedule D, so it goes off of, there's an A and a B, and the A goes from minimum wage to $25, and then the Schedule B goes from 20, anything over $25 to $60 an hour. So I cannot pay someone over $60 an hour.
Unless they were at overtime, and then it could be $90 an hour.
I can't pay them that. I can't go over $60 an hour. So if it's over 60, they cannot. I, I would have to change the bylaws, and I'm not really, I don't want to pay someone over $60 an hour at this point.
Okay, so I'm clear, like, this may be something I just don't have an experience in, but if you advertise a job for $60, now, let's pretend that there was a $60 an hour job, because it's in the high end of the range, and you were required to pay overtime to that person, how do we, how does, does that mean that you couldn't really hire them at 60? You'd have to do the overtime calculation to get so they maxed out at 60?
Well, I mean, if I was hiring a teacher, I would have to let them know that I cannot pay over $60 an hour. So if it is going to be overtime-related, I would need to make sure that it falls in that category under $60 before I hire...
That requirement supersedes the other requirement, okay.
Correct.
We all...
And not, I'm not saying you had to do this. There was a question of if anyone knew what the superintendent's response was to this?
Oh, so I sent Greg all of the information, and I said, if you have any questions, feel free to reach out, and I have not heard from him.
Okay, so we haven't gotten objection from him at least.
No, no. And I know they do it now, basically, right, Ally?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yes, yep.
But I just wanted to...
No, thank you.
Let him know, yeah.
Any other questions? Are we ready for a motion? Jacob?
Sure. Madam Chair, I move the board vote to approve the designation of certain recreation department positions, including seasonal program instructor and camp director as special municipal employee roles pursuant to MGL Chapter 268A, Section 1N, as in the name.
Second.
I just, I mean, I had understood this a bit differently than now. I had understood it that the wages were the same that we were going to pay. I think I asked that directly last time, I can check on, on the video. And that's different than what I understood, maybe I...
Wait, so do you mean if it's a teacher and I'm, and I'm in the school and I'm making, you know, whatever, $27 per hour, I would be making the same coming to work for Ally? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I was meaning if I was a college student working for $20 an hour during the summer, we would just hire the teacher at the $20 an hour during the summer. I think I asked that directly. I'll have to double-check that. And I'm a bit uncomfortable with it take, like, I like the seasonality approach for the summer, but like, idea of spending overtime in the non-summer months, like, as opposed to helping with the summer. So from what I had heard, the intent of the program was, which is, wow, we just don't have enough good staff in the summer, and don't worry, Northborough won't cost you more money because we're just going to hire that person at the, at the same wage we'd hire someone else, seems different than where we are today, and I'm just not entirely comfortable with that. And it could be a, a mis, me misremembering, so I don't want to sound like this is an indictment, but I think the facts are different than what we first discussed from my recollection.
Well, I think we, Ally tried to clarify the facts and...
Tonight?
Yeah. Right, right, right.
Well, I guess through council as well.
Okay, so for me, it's just, I heard a set of facts. Time goes on, I hear a set of facts, and they're different, so I'm just trying to bridge that.
Okay.
Madam Chair, can I, can I say something?
Yes, please.
I just wanted to let you know, so as far as overtime, I'm not too concerned about it because all the K through eight teachers, they are only 35 hours a week. I'm not looking to hire someone for more than five hours a week. So I think we will not, my intention is not to pay overtime, if I can, if I can do it. If I have a coach that worked at the high school and they want to run a program, and we have to pay overtime, it would reflect in the fees, but I'm hoping that that's not going to happen. With the K through eight teachers only working 35 hours a week, it really gives me an advantage to hire them to run a program for one or two hours a week during the school year. And then we're not paying any overtime in the summer, none. I wouldn't hire someone if we had to do that.
Well, and, and I think you, I think you made the point last time that you, you know, we want quality people, and we want quality programs, and teachers are a great, you know, great people to run some of these programs.
They're a resource.
Ally, in the attorney's email that I gave you, I just want to make sure that this is okay with you. It says, okay, so the office or position must either be uncompensated, or if it is compensated, it cannot pay for more than 800 hours per calendar year. So this applies to either a year-long position for about 15 hours or less per week, or a seasonal position, such as the recreation department positions at issue here. So...
Correct.
That goes along with the 15 hours and seasonal, seasonal?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, they would not be able to work over 800 hours for the year. I am definitely aware of that.
Okay.
Jacob?
So, thanks, Ally, and I'm, I'm in support of this cautiously, and I appreciate your comment about being cognizant and careful to try to avoid the overtime situation. I understand if, incidentally, it happens, some student stays longer at the program, and you got to be there till their parent picks them up or whatever. Stuff happens that's unplanned. I, I would encourage the department to try to not plan to have overtime as much as you can, because that would be my preference, because then we can really say, well, we are doing roughly apples to apples, whether we took a Southborough teacher or our own teacher, and in that scenario, I'd certainly prefer to have our own teacher. So that's why I'm supportive of it. But with the comment of please do the best you can, this, I always say to everyone to try to eliminate the overtime. I know people like overtime, but we got to watch our budget, so.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
And, and this is a fee-based, these are fee-based programs, so it's not all coming out of taxpayer dollars, right?
Correct.
Okay.
And it has to, it has to be beneficial to the rec department to run it. So if I have to pay someone, you know, an extreme amount of money to run a program, and I have to double the price of the program, people aren't going to sign up. So it doesn't, it doesn't work that way. I have to try and keep the prices as low as possible.
Okay, well, there's a motion on the table made by Jacob, seconded by Laura. Any further discussion? Okay, then we will do a roll call vote. Laura?
Aye.
Jacob?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Thank you very much, Ally.
Ally, thanks.
Thank you. Have a great night.
You, too.
You, too. All right, so next on the agenda is sidewalk improvement plan, long-term strategy review. All right. We've got our pageants. Hello.
Yep, that's the...
Thank you for coming.
You're welcome. Thank you for having us, having me. So we did a sidewalk, a town-wide sidewalk inventory and evaluation back in '22, resulting in the report you have in front of you dated March '23. It identified every, located every sidewalk we have in town, identified the materials, general condition. You'll see in the report, it's, I think it's excellent, good, fair, you know, poor. The curbing material as well is in there. What it did not include is any gap analysis or any more detailed, like phasing of construction. You'll see this is some capital items, so the three-year capital plan at the end of the report. Those are suggestions. The complete streets policy that the select board adopted years ago has us redoing sidewalks when we do a full roadway reconstruction. So recently, we did Warren, Stratton Way, and Edmonds roadway reconstruction, so we redid those sidewalks. We also did Thorough and Emerson last year, and this year, we did Davis-Aven Street, and we redid those sidewalks because of the level of construction. If we do like a chip seal or a bonded wearing course overlay that we did in Crestwood area, that does not trigger the need to redo the sidewalks. Mill and Overly does not trigger that. Full reconstruction does, and that's how the policy was written. So we do get, we do receive funding through the capital articles. The past, we received two $300,000 allotments for drainage and sidewalks. Drainage takes precedence because we have holes in our roads and we need to fix them. That was the Howard Street and Church Street culverts that we just completed. Of the 600,000, we've spent 430 doing those two culverts, so we have another 170 remaining. Whether that 170 goes toward another failing culvert or goes toward sidewalks, that has yet to be determined. I know.
Fiscal 2026 you're talking about?
Yes, yep, yep. Again, they're capital, those are capital appropriations. The, I know we do have some culverts that are in rough shape. Brigham Street, at the golf course where the Asprey River goes underneath, those culverts are near failure. I'd like to build to do those if we can. They're relatively easy to do now because they're still round. Once they fall apart and collapse on themselves, you have to dig it up. But regardless, we're here to talk about sidewalks. So you had asked to put together a fee for doing a 10-year capital improvement plan for sidewalks at our last meeting?
Well, I, I think the intent was that we, that we have a long-term plan so that we, we have the design ready when the grants are available.
Okay.
So, for example, we, we just missed the deadline for Maple Street, for the safer walk to school.
Yeah, safer access schools. We weren't ready anyway. We could not have applied for it, even if we were, even if we wanted to. We weren't ready.
We weren't ready, but, but I think, you know, if we, if we have a 10-year plan, could we, how do, how do we get ready for those so that we're always, like, applying for grants as quickly as possible?
So she means like, have a design plan almost?
Yeah.
So we're ready for the construction phase?
You got to, we have to spend money on design and survey and wetland flagging and permitting, construction cost estimating. We spent 200, a little over $200,000 designing Maple Street. I'm happy to implement whatever design programs you, the board wants. I, just tell me, we'll, we'll allocate the funds to do it. This plan is not a gap analysis. This does not include locations where there are no sidewalks. This is, here's a sidewalk, it's in bad condition, this is how much it's going to be to replace it. The dollars in here need to be taken with a grain of salt because they're based on a contractor doing a bunch of sidewalks. If I have somebody come out and just do hemlock, that's going to be a lot more expensive than if they do hemlock, blueberry, everything in that neighborhood. But yeah, if you wanted to put, move forward with some design services, I'm happy to do it, just let me know where and how to pay for it.
So for example, there, we had requests for a sidewalk to Proctor School somewhere on Davis Street. There was a, a resident who has been requesting that. So I, I guess the next step would be to look at all our schools and see if they, you know, if there's some sidewalk improvements or extensions that we need to do. Is that reasonable?
Yep, yep, there's a gap. I mean, so the proposal I received, 38, $33,800, was to reevaluate all the sidewalks in town, update with a gap analysis, prepare a 10-year capital plan. I'm not saying that's what's needed. That's what I received from, for direction from the board the last time I was here. I do know there are some gaps. We have the one on Hudson Street that we're aware of, and the residents aren't in favor of an easement. We have the one you're referring to, which is on Davis Street between Lanthorn and Hamilton that would close that gap so Indian Meadow can walk from Indian Meadow to, to Northgate Neighborhood on sidewalks. Allen Street's gap is done. There are other gaps identified in the prioritization plan. I think the best approach, considering the amount of public outreach that, when it's I think the best approach, considering the amount of public outreach that when it's developing the prioritization plan, would be to go to the plan and pick out projects that, that this board thinks are appropriate to move forward. And then we can get design mobilized.
Can you remind me what was the funding source for the Maple Street design that was ongoing? Is that, was that ARPA?
ARPA money. Yep. Correct. Yep. Yep. We're scheduling our pre-permitting meeting next week to go over the conservation commission requirements. There's some challenges down at the, at the, at the Equiduct Crossing. So, and that takes, you know, conservation will take two months, maybe three to get through.
So I might be wrong about this, but the, the warrant, the article on the warrant is usually, as you mentioned, that it's an allocation of money for sidewalks and culverts and drainage.
Right.
And what you're saying is that we've got a lot of culverts that, that need attention. What would happen if we separated those two?
Originally, we had three hundred thousand just for drainage. And the discussions we had during the complete streets development was we don't have any money for sidewalks. I said, well, you can just take that three hundred thousand. We were going to alternate sidewalk drainage, sidewalk drainage, which didn't make a lot of sense. Just put them together. And every, every year we have that capital article in front of the financial planning committee in a couple of weeks to talk about it again. Culverts are critical. You know, when a culvert fails, it's, it's, it's either the road is closed for weeks until we fix it or we, we Band-Aid it and then we come back and have to spend more money fixing it when it's a catastrophic failure as opposed to deterioration. But again, I don't know of any culverts that have steel plates on them right now. They're all flowing water.
Band-aid, right?
Yeah. Yep. I know the, so I don't know if you're familiar with the culvert that I'm talking about on Brigham Street. There's two big metal pipes that go onto Brigham Street. It's really easy to fix now because you can just push the water to one side, line that pipe, push it to the other side, line the other one.
Like cured and paste piping?
Yeah.
When you talk about lining?
Yep, exactly. As opposed to in a few years when the top fails and the whole culvert drops, you can't line it anymore, which is what happened to Rice Ave. That's how we ended up spending close to a half million dollars on Rice Ave when we could have just lined it. But again, you know, culverts are in decent enough shape from what I, from what I know. So there's a hundred and seventy thousand dollars left on the appropriation. If the board chooses to use it on sidewalks, I'm happy to implement it.
The, I'm trying to make sure I know the purpose of this meeting. So what is, what is the purpose right now of this meeting?
I think, I think I brought it up.
Okay.
And the purpose is that we, we have, like in financial planning, you have a capital improvement plan.
Yep.
And we have something similar for sidewalks so that we, we have a queue of sidewalks that need to be done or repaired and so that we, we're on top of the grants that are available.
Like that. And I'm reading and I'm trying to, so what I'm reading and what's been prepared tonight is our current sidewalk inventory, how many miles are covered and what the cost to keep those in?
To repair them.
So thirty, we have thirty-three miles of sidewalks and we should plan on two point two million dollars of cost to make sure we keep those sidewalks in the condition we want them in.
Well, no, the.
Over the next.
Over the next window, not over ten years or a longer time.
So the, the report you're referring to, the two point two million, again, this is twenty-three dollars. You escalate that out to twenty-six and you add in some soft costs. It's more like three point two. But you'll see in the report on page ten, it doesn't look so good because of the color, but it's got this line graph. It's a very similar line graph as we have for our pavement management program, identifying different funding levels year over year over year.
And what that would do.
And how, exactly. And how, how our grade, so to speak, would, would.
And then so, and then where I think now, what I'm tracking now and what's not in here is, is investment in new sidewalks.
Correct.
And then ironically, what's here is Blake Street, which is good condition sidewalks that we have. We're going to use the complete street around for. So let's just make the good ones excellent because we have so many sidewalks. So this is the, the problem, like the reason why I think your, your spidey senses went up was because of what I'm getting out of this report. It's like, and then, yeah, so what is the, in your opinion, like what is the range of yearly budget? We should have to maintain the thirty-three and a half miles of sidewalk, assuming we don't keep making decisions to make good ones excellent. And we make decisions to use complete streets for more sidewalks as opposed to making good ones excellent.
I mean, if we keep, well, the, the different funding scenarios has two hundred thousand dollars to keep our, our sidewalk conditions relatively level. The pavement management has a one point one million dollars to keep our roadways relatively level. That's been a challenge just because costs have been going up substantially during construction, the construction. So somewhere in the two hundred thousand dollar range annually, it's, we've been doing three hundred on the, on our roadways every year, year after year after year. And it's, it's, it's paid dividends. You know, unfortunately, we've got these culvert failures. So we get four hundred thirty thousand dollars we spent on culverts. Would have been nice to have those on sidewalks and we could sit here on the prioritization plan and say, chip, 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 chip.
And, and just because I always hear culvert, I remember not knowing what a culvert was a few years ago and now unfortunately I know it too well. What, when we fix these culverts, we're doing it right and they're done or these things are just going to continue to fail in excellent years?
It's a, it's a fiberglass cured and placed pipe. It has the same carrying capacity as a brand-new pipe. The only difference is we don't have to dig up the road. It's solid. I mean, it's, it's gotta be maybe a half an inch, five-eighth centimeter thick. UV cured. It, I have a little piece of it at the garage. You can stomp on it as hard as you want. It's not going anywhere. But yeah, it's HS twenty-five loading. So yeah, yeah. It's structural rehab.
It just, if I can jump in, it seems like from a contracting perspective, it seems like if you're going to get someone out to do it, the more you can do it once, they've got all the equipment in town, maybe they can give us a volume discount as opposed to doing one little one here, one little one there, one little one there. Is that fair?
That's correct. And that's one of the reasons the policy was adopted by the select board the way it was. When we spend a lot of money on redoing a road from gravel up, do the sidewalk at the same time. Because the contractor's already there, he's already doing that. If you were to do a mill and overlay, that equipment is not the same equipment. So it would be what you described.
Can I ask, so the one, I didn't write the exact number, one sixty-ish or so that we have from the last capital approval.
Yep.
Or article. Is it written such that that could actually be used on designing too or only construction?
It'd be designed.
So then the next question is, is do we have any, and I don't know, not going anywhere with this, but are there any gating items coming up that we can foresee that we need to design done for so we can be ready for a grant coming up next year or next cycle? That we could be spending some of this one seventy that we have right now to initiate a design with already out, with already appropriated money? Does that question make any sense?
Didn't you say Salt Street and, and Maple?
Well, Davis, obviously. Maple design is underway, as you indicated.
Does it need more funding?
It will. It will. One of the ideas that was bounced around was the shared safe routes to schools program for, for construction on the Maple Street sidewalk. That.
Because it's like a two million plus or so.
Yeah. And that's, that's kind of where the range is for those grants. You know, Grafton just did one right around the corner from my house. They got two point four million bucks.
I guess, is there anything we could do with this one? Just, I'm not, I'm not saying.
How would you spend the one seventy?
My question, that's a great question. But like my question is, is like it, to have Maple ready for this two million dollar grant opportunity at the next available time, do we need to spend some of this money to help get the design ready? Or are we good and look somewhere else to spend this money?
We're good. We're good. We're good there. The prioritization plan, I mean, that was vetted out with the community at length. So that's probably the first good point of attack. Here's a list of things the community said they wanted. And there's really rough numbers in there as far as the construction costs, but if you identify a handful of them, I can get myself and some engineers out there to take a look and see the viability.
So that's the one where we have like twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty?
That would have some, some gap analysis stuff in it too, I believe, where this is just, here's a sidewalk and it's bad, fix it.
I'm just looking at the packet.
Yep.
One, one follow-up question, Scott. Is it generally speaking, grants and, and, and other monies available for mostly construction, right? There's not, is there any available for design work or anything like that? Or does that usually fall on the town?
There's not a lot. It's, it typically falls on town. So tip projects through CMRPC, they require one hundred percent design funded by the, by the municipality as well as property easements and permit acquisition. Generally, they want the community to have their skin in the game. There's not a lot out there for sidewalk grants outside of the complete streets, which that's done. Safe routes to schools is another one. And MOD, the municipal Office of Disabilities has some to barrier removals. Those would be more, like if you have old, old sidewalks with really bad wheelchair ramps around municipal facilities, schools, you know, fire station, police station, that type of stuff to, to take away disability barriers. But there's really not a lot out there other than that. Chapter ninety is eligible for. You can use chapter ninety to do sidewalks.
And then as far as sort of the, the gap areas, right, where there is an existing sidewalk, right, there's, there's Davis. We're, we're moving on, on Maple. I know just from experience and talking to neighbors, Pine Haven, living in that neighborhood is, can be, can be treacherous walking, walking down. What are the other sort of top gap areas that I think you mentioned before, but?
There's one on Hudson Street. It's challenging just because of the geometry there. The houses are like right on top of the road and the, the residents I talked to, I mean, the sidewalk was going to be like two feet from their, from their house. Yeah, it was, it was a tough spot. Pine Haven is one that I identified and it doesn't necessarily have to be all of Pine Haven. You could probably pick it up from Shady. You know, do the two shady lane ends, bring West Main Street to Shady Lane, then let people walk Shady Lane without a sidewalk because it's, there's really nobody there. And then grab the other end. Just try to stretch the dolls a little further.
What about Whitney Street? There was, there was a sidewalk that was in disrepair.
Oh, yeah. Yep. That Pine Knoll neighborhood, it goes from Babcock to Coolidge. Take a drive down there. Take a, take, take a look at it.
You can't even, it doesn't even look like a sidewalk.
It's nonexistent. People put retaining walls up and there's areas where it's two feet wide.
You have to like crawl under trees.
Yeah, there's trees. The, the slopes are like, they look, they look like, you know, ski slopes and they don't follow the roadway. So the sidewalk will be adjacent to the road, then it'll drop down fifteen feet towards somebody's front yard and then come back up. It's not. And it was built as part of the Pine Knoll development as an agreement that they would have connectivity to the two roads so they could kind of walk the block. Obviously, it hasn't, it didn't, didn't bear any, any walking fruit, I don't think. I wouldn't want to walk it.
No, it's not safe.
So there are some, some projects we can look at. And, and then I was gonna bring up, you know, a sidewalk kind of aesthetics, but I think that's more appropriate for traffic safety. They can, they can address those details maybe.
Yeah. Cement concrete is nice. Everybody loves it. Granite curbing is fantastic. Everybody loves it. It's just expensive. You know, I put in asphalt curbing, seven dollars a linear foot. Granite curbing is sixty-eight dollars a linear foot, sometimes seventy.
Sixty?
Ten times?
Yeah, ten times, ten times the amount.
That's just material or material and labor?
No, that's installed. That's, that's, that's a material installed.
It does look nice though.
It, it does. It does. One of the issues with Northborough is we had a, a long stretch of slope granite edging, construction and developments. That, your neighborhood, Hemlock.
Yeah.
That's all slope granite edging. You look at all the gutter lines, they're all falling apart.
Like, I mean, I know we don't do slope granite anymore, right?
Correct.
I mean, it's the same material, just installed differently, isn't it?
It's, well, it doesn't have a foundation. Slope granite, slope granite, just kind of you squish it in the, in the concrete. Then you have a little bit of asphalt that overlays that concrete to the granite. And then, and then, and then as it moves, it falls apart. And you see the gutter lines. They're just, they're like that. Little ponds the same way.
So my, my only two cents for whatever they're worth, I kind of defer to the, the sidewalk experts on the board who are, I'm looking at these two over here and this maybe. I'm less of a sidewalk expert. But I'd prefer to, you know, follow the prioritization like you recommended with a little bit of an emphasis on improving the ones that are poor as opposed to the ones that are good. Good to excellent, not as high of a priority to me as a poor to like usable.
And if there's a gap and there's some poor sidewalks in that, you know, proximity, then it's logical to do it. The contractor's already there.
Yeah. And, and Hudson was done because it was on, because we redid the road or because it was on one of our priority lists?
Hudson is on the priority list and it's such a short section. I'm hopeful that when the Pierce and Blake Street project get completed, that pedestrian access from the senior housing at Center Drive can get to the food pantry and downtown safely. I mean, right now they kind of meander their way through to get nowhere. The idea for closing that gap was from Center Drive to, to the church on the other side of Cumberland Farms. But the, the right of way didn't, didn't accommodate it. So with the Pierce Street and Blake Street project, then you should be able to have accessible access to the food pantry as well as the stores downtown for Center Drive.
Quick random question, but it is on topic. The sensory pad on that Cumberland corner, is that DOT is responsible?
All those pads that have fallen apart, they're all DOTs.
That's, I mean, talk about your safety issues. I mean, whatever we can do to get them on the ball.
I reach out to them almost monthly.
So we're taking a, to use my friends, we're taking a good excellent and a good, a good sidewalk and upgrading it to excellent. And we've got this ten feet away pad that's falling apart that I walked with my kid during the Apple Fest and I was just like, what are we doing here?
Yep. Well, I agree.
Any other questions?
Nope.
So do you think we have to vote on accepting, I guess, just for, to accept the sidewalk management report? And.
We've, we've had it for a while. I think it's just a matter of putting, putting together a prioritize, a priority list off the prioritization list where it's a feasible implementation.
Would it be possible for us to like let this sit out in the public for like a little bit to get any feedback from anyone?
Yeah.
Before we say it's exactly.
Yeah, we can.
Otherwise, without further notice, just follow what you're doing. And, but I would like to, before we like say, submit this. I don't.
Good idea.
Is there a decision point you need, Scott, from us on the one seventy that looks like it might be left over?
When we get to the, once we've gone through the prioritization list, identified projects where that one seventy would be helpful, whether it be designed for future grants or it's a small one, we can just bang out low-hanging fruit and build something. And we provide a list to the select board at that point, yes. So we'll give some direction on where one seventy can go. And I think the prioritization list is the right place to start.
Is your team banging out the sidewalks or is it outsourcing to prevailing wage?
We have contractors to do it.
So it's all for prevailing wage?
Yeah. Yep. Yeah, we don't have the, we don't have the equipment to do it. We can patch.
DPW doesn't have the equipment to do something?
Yeah.
Oh, my God.
We're not, we're not production pavement. We repair. We can, we can do twenty, thirty, fifty feet of sidewalk.
How much would it cost to get the right equipment?
You don't want to ask that question.
No.
It'd be three, four hundred thousand to get a paving machine.
I know. This is, this is the thing that sounds like a good idea. That's a terrible idea. I understand the whole thing.
Probably just sits there. You know, if you buy the, if you buy a sidewalk machine, I mean.
Or rent it.
You know, municipality is gonna, is gonna sit there for nine months out of the year.
Borrow Marlboroughs or something like that?
Yes. It's one of the things that some of the more rural communities do. They buy five, five times, go in and buy one old backhoe. And they all sign up on the, on the survey monkey list on when they're gonna dig a hole, I guess.
Yeah, before that, if it saves money at the end of the day.
Leverage the community.
Okay.
Thanks.
Any other questions for, well, thank you very much.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
See you later.
Good luck.
Okay. Next on the agenda, Fire Chief's retirement, acceptance of his resignation. Okay. So, um, did you want to come up, chief?
I'd just say, as I said in my email I sent you, if you have questions, I want to be here.
Great. Thank you. Okay. So the last time we discussed this, we, we're wondering if we should accept the resignation without prejudice, which would indicate that upon retirement, the chief, if we needed information from him, would be able to come and talk, provide that. Am I stating that clearly? And is that the way everyone remembers it?
Well, I got feedback that said with prejudice, but you said without. So I don't know.
I'm trying to not play telephone game.
Okay.
But without prejudice, in my opinion, means like, I, I have cases all the time where we'll dismiss the claim without prejudice, meaning we're dismissing it, but if later on one or the other party says, you know, hey, something's different, they can raise that in the court in that. This isn't, there's no court here. The word with or without prejudice comes in court a lot. So that's the context of them. And I didn't say with or without prejudice, but when you said with prejudice, I was like, with prejudice usually means that's that. There's nothing else anyone can say about it. And that's, you know.
Okay.
So that's why with prejudice didn't make sense to me. Without prejudice seems to be, without prejudice to the town. I'm not saying the town would need to do anything and I'm not suggesting it does, but if it did, accepting this resignation has no impact on that. That's what I'm saying. I'd like to accept the resignation, let the chief.
what I'm saying. I'd like to accept the resignation, let the chief feel good about having the resignation accepted, plan his vacations and everything accordingly, and without prejudice if the town needed to do anything.
Okay, yeah, I mean, regardless, speaking with Labor Council, they said you could just accept the resignation and you would be able to.
Okay, if that's the case, then let's just accept the resignation.
Okay.
You know, I wasn't trying to make an issue, and maybe I inadvertently did, but.
Mike?
No, I was just gonna say I'm for the motion as written, not to add anything additional or take anything away. And also, thank you, Chief, for your service to Northborough and your lifetime of service as a firefighter.
Been a long time.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep, thanks. And we're very jealous.
Okay, so for those of us who had concerns, the motion as written then is acceptable?
Yeah, based on what we learned, that's on my.
Okay.
All right, I'll go ahead and I moved that the board vote to accept the resignation of Fire Chief David Parenti effective March thirty first, twenty twenty six, due to his planned retirement, and to authorize the chair to send a letter confirming the board's acceptance.
Second.
Motion made by Mike, seconded by Jacob. Roll call vote. Laura?
Aye.
Jacob?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And I vote aye, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda is discussion regarding a fall town meeting dedicated to zoning articles. This has been in discussion for a long time.
Right.
Should we split up?
Sorry, that was audible.
We heard that.
I feel it's kind of hard to know without knowing what this year's town meeting is gonna feel like. I feel fundamentally the value of having two-time meetings can help quite a bit.
I mean, I think we should, well, what comes first, the chicken or the egg? It's like if if, you know, we had a town meeting that we knew, we don't have many articles, and we could, and it depends on how many zoning articles they had in that same year. It could go together fine, but it's when we have, yeah, like four night meetings, which hopefully we won't have again, then on top of that, all the zoning changes, and there were a lot last year.
I guess my initial concern is just having one just to zoning is getting the quorum number and maintaining it.
It is tough.
Which was even tough as the nights went on.
Right.
It's like kind of, I guess, six, one half dozen the other.
Right. I know. I agree. I don't know which way it will go.
Yes, Laura? Thank you so much. I like the option of having it, especially in cases where we know we have a lot of zoning changes coming up. The last few years have been really intense with housing bylaws and then the over over, you know, the overhaul on some of the zoning changes. So I think if we have this as an option and have it formally in place, I think we're gonna continue to have a lot of zoning updates, and they are gonna become impactful for the community, which I think will, you know, incentivize people to attend. I just feel bad because these are really complex decisions that seem to get pushed to the very end of town meeting, and I don't know that they always get the attention. And then I feel like we're dealing with some situations now because when the Blake Street project came up at the end of town meeting last year, it's just now we're dealing with all the, you know, was it because of this or was it because of that? If we had dealt with those earlier in the meeting and it was, I just feel like we need to figure out a way to break them up. So we're not spending so much time trying to interpret what people did or, you know, why people voted the way they did.
Like you said, though, it was a major overhaul this year, but in years that they have like four articles, who's gonna come out for?
No, I agree.
Unless they were very controversial or?
I agree.
Do we have an idea of like what's coming down the road? Is that where this kind of comes from?
Yeah, well, I know Amy, the chair, had asked, you know, if what are the board's intentions was. So I can see what is on her agenda, you know, this upcoming year and how many articles they will have. I don't think it's as many as last year. So, yeah, let me let me double check on that.
I just feel like for for as long back as I can remember, there's been always a lot of zoning updates.
Yeah.
But it doesn't it doesn't have to exclusively be zoning. I mean, if there are issues that come up, they can be they can address them in the fall instead of waiting till the spring.
Yep, right. Like a lot of times developers that need a street acceptance or something like that, that comes up a lot in random times because they're, you know, not ready for a spring town meeting.
And we do have, you know, some projects in the pipeline that might need town meeting approval, so.
Yeah.
Think about that, too.
Yeah. But we really do have to think about the quorum, you know?
Yeah, that's true.
And then if we do have it, now we're kind of like, well, we can get that in there and this in there. And now you have two, four, you know what I mean? And it's like kind of things kind of.
And then it costs us, too, every single time, you know? It'll be to pay the election workers and set everything up and, yeah. So we just have to be savvy.
Just go to city form of government.
No, no.
Sorry, I just ripped the Band-Aid.
You could still be a town without.
You could do representative, but I don't think representative is any better. And then there's other towns who I heard about from one of our state representatives who was like, there's other towns, I don't remember which ones you mentioned, which they have a town meeting that whittles down things that then end up on the ballot and everything ends up on the ballot. But that actually process can be abused because then you essentially have a hundred people who then determine what's on the ballot, and they could turn a ten million dollar item into a zero item. Then you're voting yes or no on spending zero. And you're like, well, huh, I mean, sounds like a good vote to me, but I'm kidding. Point is, there isn't an easy answer, and I'm a second meeting costs more.
Yeah, it's five thousand dollars is the is the amount. I mean, when you think about town participation and, you know, the overall budget, five thousand dollars to have a good discussion about some things is worth it to me.
If people show up.
And just for the.
We've never really had a problem with getting a quorum.
No, I'm saying to separate that out and not have a big spring town meeting. I mean, I'd love it if it would make our spring meeting shorter, but it's just the scary part of, you know, who's how many people will attend.
Yeah, one one thing, just so you know, like I watched the joint ZBA planning board meeting. They have a lot that they're chewing on right now. I'm not saying how much they're gonna recommend because they have to have a hearing, planning board has a hearing, they got feedback from the ZBA. Some of them are really in their infancy and haven't been drafted up yet. Some of them are mature. And they've already had hearing on, just like the White Cliffs, they've already had hearing on that, however that's gonna end up. But like, there's not a small amount that they're chewing on right now. And if it all ended up, my plea to them was like, look, once you guys get this figured out and you recommend what goes to us to put on the warrant, consolidate as many of them as you think are noncontroversial that we can just pass as one item. Obviously, that's a hard call to make. But I'm like, I'm for making our meetings more efficient and us doing a better job at helping trim the Chris the tree, trim the tree of what gets there and how it's consolidated. And it would be my preference, for example, if certain things that have already been voted no last year don't get on the agenda again. That's just an example. But the point is, a more efficient town meeting is, I'm saying what everyone already has said, if the answer is move the zoning ones to the fall, that's fine with me. But I don't think that should I don't think we should be like, okay, now that solves everything.
Yeah, I agree.
So, you know, it's it's in our charter that the annual town meeting is the last Monday, blah, blah, blah. Can maybe maybe the next step is to find out how, you know, what planning and zoning?
Yep.
And decide then if if that should get moved to a special town.
Fall town meeting.
It's almost a special town meeting.
Right.
Unless unless it's incorporated into our charter that we want to have two town meetings forever and ever, right?
Yeah, it's like, I feel like you're so stuck then when you put it in your charter. It's like, we could at any time of the year call a special town meeting, and that's what it would be. So anything that's not your annual town meeting is a special town meeting. So.
Okay.
I would like to get the planning boards weigh in on this, just my two cents.
Yeah, well, I'd love to see what they have, you know, what they're expecting and warrant number.
Right. And just kind of right, have an order of priority, right? Like, I know, and maybe maybe I'm misremembering, but like some zoning articles were to comply with changes in the Massachusetts law that would have applied anyway, whether or not we like change the wording here and delete this and insert that. Like, it would have overridden anyway. So for an already long town meeting, you know, things like that, could they essentially be punted to either a fall or one further down the road? Because mass general law is gonna override what we're doing anyway.
Yeah.
You're just changing things to comply with it. I just don't know how much, you know, if there's value in four or five things, but they want eight or nine, right? Everybody's competing for time. You know, so just to Jacob's point, maybe being a little bit more discerning about what we're bringing to town meeting and a little bit more respectful of everybody's time, but.
Or and just one more idea, like, there's a couple ideas, there's a couple things at the front end, and we can talk about this more later, but I'm just planting the seed here. There's a couple things at the front end that are sort of like, yeah, duh, everyone agrees we should pay our last year's bills. Yes, everyone agrees we should do what the law requires us to do. Like, let's consolidate like those six or seven that are like pretty
Consent agenda.
Pretty into a consent agenda and combine them into one. Because every time we read a motion, we have a second, we have debate, we have move the question, we have blah, 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 we reconsider it, and like that times however many, like, it's like ten extra minutes on every item. Consolidate six items into one, you save some time.
Yeah.
That's just a thought for the future. Doesn't really impact this one. But on this one, I think we should see what the planning board would recommend because they're gonna know how many they want. They'll also know how the timing of the ones that they're considering may be more or less urgent. I don't know. So that's all.
Also, you know, the the budget will get a lot of consideration, I think, this year. I think, you know, taxes taxes will go up, and we might get a lot of a lot of discussion. So that might convince us to have a fall meeting for zoning. So we give that the time it deserves. Okay, so we're going to get more information about that item, and we'll get back to that. Okay, then next is just simply our schedule for the upcoming months. Did everyone get a chance to look at that? And does anyone have any conflicts or problems with the proposed schedule?
I had one date, the February eighth date. I won't be available.
It's February ninth and twenty third.
February ninth, I will not be available.
Okay.
If I'm the only one.
Everybody else okay with the schedule?
I know June eighth usually falls around a conference that I attend, but I usually just go remote, so.
Right.
I wouldn't say to move it for that.
I think you did that last year.
I think the last two years.
Okay, well, that's the beauty of hybrid. Okay.
Otherwise, the dates look great.
Yeah, other than that, I can't think of any conflicts at this moment.
Annual town meeting, April twenty seventh.
Yeah.
Save the date.
I may have one conflict. Let me check.
Should have done this check with the boss first.
So much to do. I'm probably like, we don't need to fix it for my thing, but I'm the March twenty third, I'm probably in Arizona in trial, and I may or may not even have to be absent for that meeting. So there's really nothing you could do to fix that. So and the trial may settle between now and then. Who knows?
Nothing's during a holiday week, right? I know, that's obvious.
Is is March twenty third?
Yeah, nothing's during.
When will close the warrant? When will we close the warrant?
April sixth? Uh, no, I think it's two weeks before, so it's.
So that would then have to be April sixth, right?
I mean, we could close it whenever we're ready to close it, but but we at least have to, let's see, do the calendar. Where's my calendar? You know, it doesn't do months.
It's just that there's sometimes lots of discussion about the warrant.
Yeah.
Before.
I mean, I wouldn't be surprised if we have to put another meeting on somewhere that's not on here.
Especially depending on the timing of how White Cliffs decisions end up in terms of like finalizing and.
Okay.
Otherwise, if I know, from as far as I know, at nine oh one on December first, I'm good.
Okay, so so far, we will have more than a quorum.
Yep.
With people's schedules. So is there a motion to accept this schedule?
Madam Chair, I move that the board vote to accept the meeting schedule for January twenty sixth through June twenty sixth as presented in the memorandum dated November twenty fourth, twenty twenty five, from Town Administrator Bacon to the Select Board.
Second.
Thank you. Motion made by Laura, seconded by Jacob. All those in favor, raise your hand. Great, okay. Motion passes. Okay, next on the agenda is, are there any updates on the fire station building project, either from our liaison person or Stephanie?
Do you want to go over your last?
Yeah, I mentioned it earlier, but just under this heading now, we did vote. There there were combined proposed change orders. They call them PCOs. If you're ever looking at that meeting and you're figuring out what all the acronyms mean, PCO is a proposed change order, or it's when one of the contractors says, hey, I think I'm entitled to some more money because of work that I think I did that it was outside of the scope of what I bid, they say, or or because we, the town, through our OPM, have said, change literally what you're doing. So those are two ways where that comes in. So there were about two hundred thousand dollars worth of these proposed change orders that were being discussed between the OPM and the contractors for a period of time. I don't know how long, but I saw them on our sort of like pipeline for several weeks in advance. And we were always told like, there's nothing to do on that because we're still trying to resolve it between OPM and contractors. So what we were told was that through a, you know, pretty, obviously, good faith negotiation process, and I felt like our OPM did a good job advocating for the town, they got the contractors to agree to take one one thirty-five instead of the two hundred that they were demanding. And we broke down the exact amount. It was a hundred and something for additional excavation work to essentially stage. So some of the material had to be held on site and stacked up in piles and then moved again into the truck because of the timing of when the asphalt facility wasn't always able to take the number of trucks we needed to send them on a given day. So a pile had to wait and be sent on a different day. Things like that, that the excavators were like, not fair for us after to move dirt twice, that it wasn't really our fault to have to move it twice. So that's what I understood their basic argument was, in addition to the fact it was more dirt than they thought they'd have to be moving. And then second, the second part of that, which I think accounts for roughly thirty something thousand, was additional cost to replace us, put structural fill in the place where dirt was removed. So that's, as far as I know, I've tried to ask, like, are there any other in the pipeline of those that that we're not seeing? Or because the spreadsheet they give us has quite a few proposed change orders, many of which don't have any description on them. It's like proposed change order, reference number, 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 this amount of dollars. I'm like, what does that mean? So I asked our OPM to get more detail on those because to me, that's not actionable information. It doesn't tell me what's coming in the pipeline. So he said he'll try to improve that. But so the then we had a discussion about the clock. I'm not a clock design expert, so I kind of deferred to the clock design experts on that discussion. My preference would be not to have the clock, but I don't know that that's an option at this point. But they were talking about whether it's Roman numerals or this color or that color. And I'm sorry, I don't have a great picture for you on what the clock's gonna look like. But a lot of people agreed that what they were gonna do on the clock was ideal. I think the clock's overkill. I don't think anyone is driving by the fire station to see what time it is. If they do, they have a clock in their car.
But if you need to time travel. Make a certain clock at a certain time. This is, you never know.
It is. It is right. It's gonna be, I don't know if you can be like this. Like, that is, that fire station is gonna be on top of us. I guess the question I have is funny, Financial Planning Committee, one question, I never got this answer. How much is the clock?
It's like twenty thousand. It's like twenty thousand or my recollection.
I had a much higher number, twenty grand, clock fire.
Actually, I'm shocked.
I would thought it was five hundred thousand dollars at least.
No, 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 my recollection, and I'm sorry if I'm wrong, there's a lot of facts and the clock just wasn't like my biggest importance radar thing.
Yeah.
I'm sure there's wiring and.
No, I guess, I guess, I guess that my question is actually incorrect, because like I, the question was, do we need the tower at all?
Oh, no, the tower is for training.
I understand, but how much does that tower cost?
A lot.
Do you know the number?
Probably more than half a million.
Yeah, that was the question that couldn't be answered.
The training tower is, the justification for the training tower goes much further beyond having a place to put a clock.
Yeah, understood. Yeah, those are highly highly debated.
And yeah, I mean, certainly good reasonable minds could differ about that, but that's a debate that's been had, but the clock itself. Forgive me if I'm wrong, but I thought it was around the twenty K mark ish. Anyway, whatever decide decisions they were making about the design wasn't impacting what their cost estimates were, it was just design choices. That again are kind of beyond my expertise. I did want to make one more thing, if I can, on this topic. We had a, we had a select board meeting on November third where I essentially kind of adopted by reference Stephanie's report. You had given us a really, really detailed.
Oh, when I was away and I had to watch that, yeah.
Yeah, so you had given us a summary, I think it was dated October twenty second.
Yes.
Or it was dated whenever it was for the October twenty second FSBC meeting.
Yeah.
I thought your summary was superb.
Oh, yay.
And that's why when in the meeting I had a report on that, I said, rather than like recreate the wheel, I defer to Steph's summary. I noticed that it wasn't in our packet, and so my assumption was it was in our meeting packet, so the public has seen the summary. I went back and it's not what I would like to do if I can do, Madam Chair, is to move that we amend our November third. Meet materials, just to add that to the materials, to the pub, to the record of that meeting.
Did I give it to?
It's, you gave it to all of us.
No, at that meeting, though.
Yeah.
You didn't give the report, it was a written report.
Yeah. I think it was on our desks when we came.
Yeah, because I was in Florida and then I had to catch up because we were, yeah, so I gave you guys a summary. I just don't know if it was at that meeting or I don't know. I thought I just did it like when I got back to my office.
If it's November third, that's perfect because we haven't, we're going to approve those meeting minutes at the next meeting.
No, we already approved November thirteenth.
But do you know that I gave that at that meeting? That's my only question, because. Of course, if it went along with that meeting, then it should be part of the packet, but if I was just, you know, rando in my office and decided to shoot you guys a summary, so you had it. That's not part of the meeting packet. That's my only question.
Well, yeah, so it's, so you sent us on the twenty seventh. And by the way, regardless of the way, I appreciate you doing the summary, like it was.
Oh, I needed it for myself as well, so yeah.
So so on the twenty seventh, you sent the board an email with the summary, which I think was for the purpose of giving it, giving us a summary. And so maybe I kind of. I thought it was part of our packet, and so that's why I was like, I just adopt her report as my report. Turns out it's not part of our packet. I would prefer if it's okay for us to just make that summary part of the public record, if that's okay.
I want to take another look.
If you want to take a look at it.
I don't care, but I don't know, can you legally do that if it wasn't part of the meeting?
Well, I mean, I adopted it by reference in my comment, so.
If Jacob referenced it.
That's fine, that's fine. I just don't know if you can do that.
Well, I'm just, from my perspective, when I say to the public, hey, I like Stephanie's report. Refer to her report for my comments to save us fifteen minutes of me going through the report.
I guess if you if you say, you know, which she emailed on blah, 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 just so.
Yeah.
The point is, if we're supposed to be doing real meeting minutes, I didn't generate the report.
For that meeting.
For that meeting, so if you just say, you know, as emailed, blah, 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 whatever.
Anyway, so if that's just possible that we can make it so the public can see, I just don't want to have to say everything that's in the report. Because I, there's some people out there who appear to think that I'm not reporting on that, which I think you all four would.
But I, another thing, I wasn't, so, but this is the thing, I took that from the meeting. So that's like me watching it, like third person watching it and and then writing. I just thought it would be helpful to you guys, so I don't know, I wasn't there in body, so I don't know if we should rely on my notes. It was just, it was a helpful tool, but.
I thought your notes were great, accurate, and I lived through the meeting. And if I had written notes, I don't think I could have written better ones. That's what I'm saying.
Did you do notes like ChatGPT or with a hand?
No, so we, and part of your, the transcript, you basically like it, it'll be written out and da, da, da. And so you have to be careful because some things might be misconstrued or whatnot in the transcript of it all. So so that's why I'm saying I wasn't there in person, so if there was anything wrong, that was just me. Trying to be helpful to you guys, but more so myself because I was, I was in Florida.
I'm not trying to put Stephanie in a bind because she obviously wasn't in the meeting. All I'm trying to say is, I was trying to tell the public, my report is very well reflected in your summary, except the only missing piece was the public didn't have access to her summary, and that's what I'm trying to fix.
I know.
You would like the summary included in the minutes of the.
Or the minutes to this meeting to say, that's my report.
I just think that's weird. Only because I wasn't there and what if, what if something is because it was a transcript of, I don't know.
Everyone can see the meeting, it's, the point of this is to save time. If someone could dispute something in there, which I, I read your notes, I was at the meeting. It's not verbatim, nothing is verbatim. I thought it was a fair summary, which that's what summaries are supposed to be is summaries. And so, so if someone's like, oh, I disagree with that, then go back and watch the meeting, it's fine.
Would you like to take another look at it and get back to us?
No, I'd probably have the same. I'd probably have the same summary, but but, um, yeah.
I'm, I'm not trying to take up more time with this, but the point is, is like, I was actually trying to save time. Because A, anyone can go watch the meeting, B, y'all are sick of hearing me talk about what's going on over there. And C, I was like, Steph did the work to do a great summary, I read it, it was what I would have written plus better, and so I was like, shortcut is adopt her summary, but it wasn't in the packet, and that's what I'm trying to fix right now.
So we would need to make a motion.
Just a vote to amend our meeting minutes to say. Include in the materials that were considered by the board that day as part of Jacob's report, that, as, under Jacob's report. And this isn't even Stephanie's report, this is Jacob's report.
And is that your motion?
That's my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Jacob, seconded by Laura. All those in favor, we can raise our hands. Okay, motion passes.
I'm glad you like it.
It's an excellent report, Stephanie.
But to be clear, you're not looking to have meeting minutes every committee?
No.
This is just.
No.
Because.
But. Very funny, I read some notes over the weekend that I'm apparently not reporting to you what's going on in the FSBC. Because apparently I'm, I don't know, someone's saying that. What I, if I remember on that October, November third meeting, I believe my words were, I'm going to ring the accountability bell. Until we get accountability or you vote me off the island. I think those were my words, which I think is a far cry from saying Jacob's given up on this.
Yeah, I don't think anyone has that. I mean, anonymous person that posts on social media doesn't carry the weight is like, I mean, I just don't think anyone that is actually paying attention has even an inclination of that. So I think that's.
Well, this is to set the record straight.
Yeah.
Okay.
But yeah, I like saying.
Any other questions I can help you that we haven't already addressed or that haven't been addressed in executive session, that that's where those things need to be addressed? Anything else that I can help you with?
I'd say that you've kind of set the bar in terms of what excellent committee looks like of a select board. I'm not sure anyone works harder, more thoroughly, spends more time on it, so just thank you. Because it's not easy and I appreciate the thoroughness with which you take it on.
So before we move on, can you tell us what the, the fencing is up on that hill? Is that, what does that represent? Just as far as the project's going to go, where's the wall going to be?
Talking about the chain link fence?
Yeah.
The chain link fence, I think, is just a security measure, so people don't enter the construction site.
Okay, uh huh.
Yeah.
The wall, I asked the question, how many more feet back do we have to go? Because I was asking, like, we haven't reached a ledge yet. Are we sure we're not going to reach a ledge was my question, and the answer was, don't know for sure. And they said they didn't know how many more feet to go, but. That's the answer. That's my report, is they don't know how many more feet into the hill they need to go. It's not to the fence is my understanding. The fence is just a barrier on the construction site. It's not where the dirt is right now. They still have some work to do on the big wall in the back, the retaining wall. So it's probably somewhere in between where it is and where the fence is, but that is a little bit of speculating. And I'm just hoping that when they do that, they don't find. Solid rock.
Okay, all right, so. Any other updates or can we move on? To item nine, which is establishment of an economic development committee, discussion and possible vote. Stephanie, you provided us with an outline of what this committee would look like.
Yeah, and this is just, you know, a suggestion. Of course, we could tweak anything. So I said, which is typical, seven members, sometimes groups have nine, sometimes five. But I said local business owners and commercial property representatives, residents with expertise in economic development, finance, marketing or planning. Representatives from relevant town boards like planning, zoning, master plan implementation committee, so. I mean, do you guys have a different idea of the makeup?
Two questions, well, I guess, one is. What's the criteria to be in a committee? Do you have to be a Northborough resident or Northborough taxpayer?
I would say yes.
So that, yeah, I'm just making, so Northborough residents seems pretty clear. That's an easy one.
Yeah.
And then so Northborough, you could go outside Northborough and be Northborough taxpayer and be eligible for to be on this committee.
So they could be a business owner and live in a different town, but they're.
Yeah, that's what I'm just trying to clarify on that. I think we should fold one or two committees to get another committee, like I feel like some of our committees are inconsistent with their charter. And not live their useful life.
Do you? I was going to say, do you want to say it or?
I mean.
I could say what's on my mind, but.
Yeah, so I mean, I don't know, like, I think MPIC is a clear one that's working outside their charter.
Can I just?
Yeah, please.
Sede some time to me. One of the things on here is like, give implementation recommendations for master plan as it relates to economic development. I'm like, that's already in the scope of MPIC, but I don't see them doing that.
You don't see MPIC doing that or or academic development?
I've seen MPIC focus on Blake Street for the last six months, so.
Well, so maybe this is, it's better to, you know. Your master plan, that's like, that's our town's strategic plan, so, you know, it it covers different areas of town. It covers different, you know. Visibility towards, you know, what we want for commercial health, what we want for residential health. So there's many different areas, it's just economic development speaking, what could really help get the ball rolling. So their mindset would be more so that where MPIC is looking at that strategic plan saying, and, you know, whether or not. You think they're.
It's okay, I'm not trying.
Covering all all avenues of the master plan, that's, you know, that's something different. But economic development is how do we spur, you know, opportunity in town and make sure that, you know, we're, we're growing where we want to grow and have a plan. And incorporate the existing businesses into future business life, and that's important too. So, you know, we make sure that the businesses we have now stay and, you know, we provide a path for them to be able to do so.
And then Steph, what staff commitments would there be for this committee?
And who would it be?
Well, like it could be, you know, of course, you'd have your outside liaisons, like I'm, that's like part of my goal here is to make sure that we stay online. So I would definitely be involved, not part of the committee per se. You know, of course, we would need somebody. Planning wise, DPW wise, whether or not it's on the committee, but they would be here to help, so.
And this would be a committee subject to open meeting law and.
Yeah.
All all that.
So they need meeting minutes and, yeah, they would be appointed by you guys.
So so you have worked in a couple of different towns?
Well, actually, they'd be appointed with, by me, I I would give you my suggestions and then you would say yes or no, yeah.
You do the hard work and then we just say yes.
No, 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 we're talking about right now, but this is.
These would not be select board interview committee appointments?
You would interview the people or? I think that's how the fire station committee got done, that.
Yeah, but was that, I think, so building committees are.
Like Peaslee, how did that get done? That that was.
That was McInerney.
Yeah, and he.
He came up with the people. Yeah, yeah, that's a good question. I'm not sure.
Yeah, he recommended the people, we, we had a discussion.
And and did you do the interviews?
No.
No. No.
Yeah, I. I would not, I would want the select board to do the interviews and to think about committee composition and things of that nature. I don't want a special interest committee.
I wonder if it could be part of, would you have it part of a select board meeting, like a half hour before an interview, like two people?
The challenges that I'm seeing with our economic development in my short, my time at select board will not be, will not be addressed by this economic development, by this committee. The challenge is on how we sort of like. How we have objective conversations, data-driven conversations, conversations as opposed to advocacy for something. I've seen the two biggest things that I've struggled with are advocacy projects that got momentum. I think you and I traded emails over another company in town that we're going to do something for. And, all right, well, why don't we have conversations about what community partnership looks like? So like those.
That's huge, you're right, yeah.
So how do we create a venue? And I just stumbled upon that, that wasn't, I don't even think that select board knows what I'm talking about, but like, how do we go and have?
So we can build that right into, so goals of, so this is the mission for our economic development committee, you know, to. Enhance community development participation, yeah, so you can write whatever you want.
And I think an economic development, development committee has to inherently be fast, remove barriers, make Northborough easier to work with. Use discretion on if it aligns with what the town's goals are and what the town wants to be, and that's where the committee composition is very important. So I I don't know, and I don't want to hire anyone outside, I don't want to hire another staff person that's doing this. Unless it was a clear ROI, like if there was someone that had demonstrated success on the communities and came and overwhelmed us with what they could do in Northborough, I'm all ears. But I don't want to just do it to do it. I think when Westboro did it, they did it very thoughtfully and and they had a person and they did the development and they got companies like Cold Harbor to come into town. When Northborough couldn't do it, that person did really well and then Waltham recruited them. So if there's an avenue like that where we think that we have the right conditions for someone that has expertise and could do that, I'm open to that. I think if we just make it, if we try to build it, we're not going to do it well.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, but we could put whatever directives we want, you know, for the committee to follow and, you know, set a goal base. So they have some, somewhere to roll from. In Holden, we had our economic development committee just died out. It was like, you know, years, so we incorporated a whole new thought process where they would work on. Basically, the community with each other first, so they'd have different events, da, 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 and through that, there was a lot of momentum. For new businesses to come in and spur off, you know, what they have built. So it was, it was good, and there's not a lot of commercial property in Holden, but it really did help bring people together and helped at least, and I can say this one hundred percent. They, knock on wood, the bill, all the businesses has have stayed in in Holden, and I think it's because they all now lean on each other. They'll invite each other to special events they have, so it becomes like this network and through that, there's other interests. So, you know, but there's definitely. A benefit for our existing businesses to involve themselves and and this group is the working group that, you know, they make sure it happens.
And Northborough's had pockets of of success with small business. And Northborough's had pockets of, of success with small business and the energy around it. And I think the holiday trolley was a big part of that, when we had more sense of community and we had, and, and then we started to, the businesses get to know each other, you get to know the businesses by local, those sort of things. And that's, I mean, that's a community thing, I mean, that's a small piece of what the economic development. I'm thinking more strategic, and, and like, more in terms of how we can help the economic growth that we want in Northborough. That can, like, one of the frustrating parts that just occurred recently was to see the industrial tax rate grow basically flat and the residential tax rates going up 11%. That's not economic development, but there's, but there's something there, too, where, be like, okay, how do we figure that? I mean, this is, it's a bit of a separate item, but like, the businesses that come in aren't all equal. They're, I'm not saying they're not important, they're just not all equal. And it would be nice to have businesses that are aligned with what people want in town and help to make the Northborough easier to work with. And I think those things would be welcomed, as opposed to just seeing a building and being nervous about what's gonna happen with it.
Yeah, right.
So, you've mentioned a couple of times, making it easy for developers to work in the town.
Not developers.
What did I say?
Well, I said developers, businesses.
What did I say?
Developer.
Oh, okay. So, so you're talking about kind of expediting zoning and permits and all of that sort of thing?
I think that's a part of it, it's like, hey, I'm coming to Northborough, what's the playbook? How do I do well here? I talked to, I won't say the businesses, talked to a couple of businesses at Apple Fest, and I'm like, you know, I said, how's it going? How, how, how is the whole process going? And, and they're like, eh, we're close, I don't wanna mess it up. Was it harder than it should have been? Well, and like, so I think there's a part of just listening and trying to understand how we can expedite through the town to make us easy to do business with and make people just understand what to expect. Hey, here's what to expect, do we do business in Northborough? Here's what to expect, here's, here's the people that you need to talk to early, here's people to think about here, and just be more transparent and just think about it, and it's no one's fault, like, we're just not thinking about it. So if someone comes and stumbles upon trying to do something in town, oftentimes, they don't know what to do. And they're just kind of figuring it out, so there's time and uncertainty, and they signed a lease on the building, and they're paying rent for a couple of months, and the business is gonna take a couple of months more than they thought because they're trying to figure out how town works, well, let's just try to help you figure it out. I'm not gonna tell you, I can get it approved tomorrow, but like, here's the things you need to do when you come to Northborough to open a business.
Right, and, and how many committees you have to go before?
All that stuff.
Yeah, and, and honestly, we do that now for developments that come in. So it'll be everyone from the police chief to the fire chief to DPW planner, CONCOM. I'll go downstairs a lot and we'll just get into a group and hash out, you know, where the step one should be, step two, so.
Oh, that's good.
They know, the department heads know how important it is, especially from me, that we make it easy on businesses coming in here, and because they're spending a lot of money. I was in engineering, just one little plan is like $1,600. So, and a lot of these are small businesses or, you know, small developers, and they are just starting out. So, everything has to be very organized and clear to follow. And I, I think that we've done a decent job so far.
It's just being more helpful, yeah.
Yeah.
So having done a couple of events where we've worked with local businesses to get, you know, to get that momentum going, I think there's a lot of value in having a committee to oversee that. And from a sales perspective, it's a lot easier to keep, you know, the, the businesses are kinda like our customers, and it's a lot more cost-efficient for us to keep our customers happy than it is to try and find new ones. So if there's little things that we can be doing, like an extension of an economic development committee, just to have that, you know, white glove approach with our businesses, I think that'll really instill a lot of, you know, just easier communication. I know that when the community affairs team goes out to recruit for their, for their events, that there's a lot of reception from the businesses just from having somebody from, you know, Angie or Suzie who are going out and doing this legwork, they appreciate it. And I have always been a big fan of the public-private partnerships, which I find in the past have come up, you know, based on what the business, the business that was in touch at the time needed. I love the idea of this because it'll be a wider audience that we can reach, and we can really think about what type of partnerships we'd like to do with the businesses and then share those ideas. It's also gonna reach a much wider audience than just quarter nine. And so I know there's some really enthusiastic people in the town who I think would serve really well in these different capacities, and I see a lot of value in it.
Well, it's more intimate, too, it's just Northborough, you know, so, yeah.
So, those are my thoughts on this.
It seems like there may be some overlap, maybe, in terms of like, membership. I don't, I'm not sure about this, but based on that, it sounds like you almost wanna have someone from the community affairs committee.
I was gonna, I, yeah.
No?
They, they have.
Oh, they said no, okay.
No, the, the community affairs committee, I mean, all of our committees have, you know, have their charge.
No, 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 I'm not saying have them do it, I'm saying someone from that committee serve on this committee so that they know what the community affairs committee is doing, and so they can be like, oh gee, you have this idea, hold on, let's not recreate the, the community fair committee's already working on this, we can integrate that with your plan here, that's all I meant.
They have relationships.
I didn't mean add to their to-do list.
But I think they're a little bit different, you know, because there is, there's community affairs, there's cultural council, there's a lot of these committees that enhance the community. This is just gonna be more specific to economic development.
Yeah, but a good example of partnership was the Northburow.
Yes.
So, I mean, it was all the businesses.
Yep.
Trying to give them exposure and get people.
But who initiated that? Was that you?
So, I was telling Suzie that we did that in Holden, and she said, oh, that's a good idea, da-da-da-da, so, yeah, from there. And thank God for Angie, she was amazing.
She did awesome.
But to your point, I think that people, that community affairs and cultural council have established relationships with a lot of the businesses in town. And if you could consider some of, you know, representation from those committees in the makeup of the larger committee, that might be helpful.
And like, yeah, I'm not saying like, oh, I'm committed to that idea.
I misunderstood you, I thought you were saying like, just like community affairs taking over.
No, 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 no.
Sorry.
No, 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 that's not what I was trying to say. I was trying to, and, and I'm also hesitant to be like, oh, I don't, it's like, we get, it's, it's tempting, and we end up doing it a lot to like recycle the same people and put them on 14 different committees, and then it's like, that's kinda not helpful either, just some, except you need a little new blood. And, but I loved what my friend Ms. Zaitin said about how like, this remind me of what a partner in, where I, in my line of business told me one time, it's like, sometimes your best source for new work is existing clients. Don't go try to find a new client, you've got existing clients, make your existing clients happy, you know? Sometimes that's the best source of growth is existing people who are here, who are invested. And so, and you certainly don't wanna ignore them.
No.
Good insight.
Sales.
Yep.
So, it sounds like people are pretty excited about having this committee.
Yeah, I mean, for, I mean, agree with all the comments. Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's important, right, if we wanna sort of start shifting tax burden as much as possible without shifting the tax rate, that's development of our commercial industrial, right? We need to get additional investment, we're running out of buildable land. So I kinda think of it as you gotta kinda go up rather than out, right, because you can only go out so much farther. So I, I, I like the idea, like, it being a place where somebody who wants to open a business or has a business can probably easily Google it or go onto our website and find this group and this committee and be able to contact them. I'm okay with to get it up and running fast, that, something that you would maybe, you know, the idea of you finding the first seven and then filling vacancies or gaps with the interview committee, you know, kind of, and then moving forward.
Oh, you're gonna do the interviews, right?
That's fine, yeah.
Well, I was saying like, the initial seven, and then if somebody drops out or somebody.
I think that we were saying that we want that to go through the select board interview subcommittee.
So, okay.
Right, I'm, I'm saying I would be okay with Stephanie getting it up and running with the initial seven and then vacancies and things from there.
Yeah, so we would, we'd post it just like any other, you know.
I would just like to still have the subcommittee be a part of it.
A lot of things that Mike says, Mr. Teigen says, I pushed back on the last one, I would like the subcommittee to just vet them, even the first round. And, and one other thing to keep in mind is I do think you're gonna have to pick the staggered years. Whenever you start a, if you're gonna do a committee that has three-year, you can't give them all a three-year term at the beginning. You gotta say, you have a one-year term, you have a two-year term, you have a three-year term.
You did break up another point, though, that I wanted to mention, is we, when you talk about industrial property, we do have the industrial development committees, it's gonna be an overlap to that.
Hasn't that dissolved?
Where is that?
It's not dissolved, it's still, there's nobody on it, the person evicted the seat. But in our charter, we have industrial development committee, and that's, I think, a different skillset than economic development. So I just.
Yeah, I think economic covers everything, you know, it's.
I think the charter needs to be clear, like, we could go down, so it can be super clear on what the charter is and get, get energy around it.
Yep.
And I, I agree with the comments, we need a select board subcommittee chair to, to go and figure out, because we're gonna have to figure out what we want this committee to be a little bit, too.
Well, we need to figure out, right, the, I mean, how many business owners, how many residents, how many?
I would like to.
Because if you're, if you're looking at, you know, kind of a, a wider lens, I guess, in all of the different areas of economic development, you, you don't wanna just like pigeonhole one set of expertise.
I would want the charter, I don't remember exactly what it says here, but have some flexibility in the numbers of each representative, representation, because like, let's say you say one and only one business owner, but then you get two really strong applicants, and you're like, I could do with one if you were.
Yeah.
Representative of another committee, you know, I mean, I, I get needing to have that diversity kind of specified, but like, I would like to also have some flexibility within it, so that depending on the candidates that you get.
Well, I, yeah, I said local business owners and commercial property owners, but, so, yeah, it's not.
Someone may check multiple boxes on that as well.
I didn't number two residents or, yeah.
I mean, I, I want experienced residents.
Yeah, definitely.
I mean, this is one where I think experience matters a lot.
Yes.
And be really thoughtful on how we do it.
Absolutely.
And the, and our communication between those different committees, I agree, is important, so we're not stepping on toes.
And like I said, it's a, sorry, it's a, it's a weighing, like, you don't, at the same time, I already said it, so, you don't want it all just other committee members.
Right, no, no, I, I agree with that, I think you wanna like, and that's where it starts with the charter. And it starts with, okay, and we probably need some work to do on the charter, what we want the economic development committee to do, and what role the economic development committee should play as advisors to the select board.
That doesn't have to be, see, that's where I think a lot of our problems lie. We put things in the charter and then years down the line, this is like an executive action. It doesn't, you don't need to put it in a charter, it's just a committee that's formed by vote of the select board for the specific reason. It's, that, that's.
I think, so whether we call it a charter or not, I think the charter needs to be the specific reason that we can talk about why, what the purpose the economic development committee is.
Can I, can I, I think he's not referring to our town charter?
Yeah.
That would, the charge would be written.
Yeah, thank you.
Sorry, I think John's.
Oh, go ahead.
Not referring to the town charter.
Oh.
The charter.
The charge, yeah.
The charge.
Oh, the charge.
I'm thinking, and I was thinking, like, I'm still thinking of a non-lever-refering town charter, it's like, hey, what are we, what do we do?
The charge, right, exactly.
The charge, whatever terminology you wanna use, I'm totally cool with.
Okay, no, that's, okay, that's what I'm used to, okay, so, absolutely, and I think this is where maybe you guys should leave tonight, think about it and figure out the most important parts of this committee and what you wanna target. Yep, and I can.
I don't, I don't want this committee to be about trying to get more influence control within town, but rather, how do we go and maximize the town's economic growth? So like, and there's a little bit of play there, but, yeah.
Yeah. And, and, you know, I guess, too, they have, well, you would know Jacob, but zoning-wise, you know, a lot of towns have issues because they should really have a mixed use in this area and they don't. Or, you know, industrial should be expanded if there's room. I, I don't know if planning and zoning feel like they're okay now.
Well, I mean, I, I would say.
Yeah.
Always can be improved, it's a, devils in the details on what exactly is gonna be, what's the improvement and how to do it. I, I would say you probably wouldn't want, and I don't think you probably could, have any members of the ZBA on this, I don't think you could do that or should do that. Planning board, I don't know. What I, what would make sense is for this committee, if they're like, hey, look, here is a recurring theme that we're having difficulty in economic development, we really gotta fix the acceptable uses in the blah, blah, blah zone. Then they can go to the planning board and be like, hey, we've thought about this, you need to consider this bylaw change on the zoning for blah, blah, blah. Because that'll make it easier and it's consistent with blah, 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 and here's the argument for it. Like, I could see that as being one, one of many.
Yep.
Things that they could do, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to put, nor I don't think you could put like a ZBA member on this. Planning board, I don't know, I don't know what rules apply to the planning board, they're separate, like, an official.
Our planning director, I assume have some role, following up on what's going on on this committee.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, because, you know.
I know she supports it.
Changes that, you know, need to.
She, I know she works hard and supports a lot of committees already.
Well, right, that's the thing, it's sort of adding, that was my staff question earlier.
So that's, that's why I'm saying, the staff would be available for any questions, any, any help that's needed from the committee, but they just wouldn't be actual members of the committee.
That's, that's how I see it, too, it's like, okay, you know, and if you have a question that.
Right, like, hey, can you pick up?
You go, say, okay, let's bring in Scott, you bring in, like, we can totally do that without having people, without a time suck, because the agility here is part of the value.
I also believe, check on this, maybe? If this is an advisory committee that isn't doing any of our executive functions, I don't think they are a public body. Just throwing that out there. Check that.
Meaning that they would have to be.
They're not subject to OML. Check, just check me on that. If they're just an advisory body that we're not delegating any of our executive.
If you're calling it an advisory committee.
So if you wanna check in that, I just think it gives them more flexibility, because the requirement to keep meeting minutes and have a clerk and do all that, that's just more staff member time that it takes to support the committee. Maybe we wanna do that.
I don't think that that's true, because I remember years ago, there was a groundwater advisory committee, and they were responsible for open meeting law.
It depend, but it, there's a, it's on the, anyway, we don't have to get into it, that's why I wanted to check. There are some advisory committees that are, some that aren't, just calling it advisory doesn't make it so or not, it depends on.
And I'll find out how to do it, which way are they.
Of what their authorizing body who gave them their role, what they designated them to do, depending on the answer to that question, it is or isn't a public body. There's like a big FAQ on the at mass.gov website that I've read.
What would be the benefit of it, though?
Oh, just so you don't have to have someone.
You don't have to have somebody to do the meeting minutes.
The extra expense of meeting, keeping up on.
I mean, typically, those small groups, somebody in the group would just like take notes and whatever, but.
I'm not saying that we wouldn't want it to be available to the public, it's certainly, that would be good, it's just, I mean, we spend five minutes reading a speech at the beginning of every meeting just to comply with OML, you know?
Yeah, traffic safety committee has, I mean, I remember doing minutes for them. Just as part of the committee.
We may have some that are doing it that don't need to, I'm not gonna try to say which ones those are, I'm just asking if.
I agree that having staff time for minutes is not ideal. If that's the, having staff spend their time to do minutes is not ideal.
No.
Are we, are we leveraging technology with Chad?
Yes, many of them.
Oh, it's, it's amazing.
I assume that everyone is, right?
It's amazing, yeah.
I believe FSBC, the staff member who's doing that is doing a great job, and I think they're utilizing some level of.
Yeah, you have like a meeting minutes pro, you have like a whole program, I know.
Oh, God, yeah.
Those meeting minutes and all that good stuff.
Yep, it's perfect.
So, so what happens? It's recorded, would, would this committee just have to record the, the meeting and then somebody?
Yep, so it would, it would, it would take the recording and it provides a transcript. So, but you do, like I said, you have to be careful, because like, of course, any machine can screw up or it could hear something incorrect, like especially numbers.
Stephanie, it's not clear who's talking.
Right, yeah.
I think, well, to Jacob's point, it would be good to know if we have that option, that it could be out, it wouldn't have to comply with sometimes burden, burdensome.
Right, right.
Open meeting law stuff.
Yeah, I'll find out, yeah.
Helps them sort of move quickly and, and be able to have conversations to, to kind of move things along.
Right, I know.
And it would be good, kind of talking about other committees and kind of where things overlap. There's obviously, for good reason, a lot of focus on downtown, but it'd be great to have sort of that whole town approach, because, right, there's a lot of other.
Like down Route 20. I know, I am dying for that area, too.
Yeah, the.
Just like the gate, the other gateway, like Route 20 where the old, you know, motel was and.
Where like JJ's has been closed down forever.
I love JJ's.
Do you?
This man also love it, oil, I mean, I've been there, it's been closed, I'm not a freak.
You're just hanging out. Yeah, like West Main and, um, you know, Route 20, you know, this way, you know, there's a lot of opportunity to, empty, empty storefronts, not just in downtown.
I know.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep. Are we gonna get?
And Northboro Crossing is a huge part of our town now, I mean, that's, they should somehow be incorporated and.
Yeah, it was cool when they did that WRTA, like the van study, all of the traffic that was just going to Northboro Crossing, it was like, what's over there? Oh, no.
Everything is over there. They're, they're working on the open space committee, just so you all know, like, um, getting very particular on the design for the connectivity trail that'll go from Shrewsbury and connect to Westboro.
Be Walt.
Goes over, yeah, part of our property down there, so they're like, they're trying to move forward on that.
That's great.
That's so exciting.
There's some complications that I don't need to get into here, but like, they're working for solutions on those.
Yeah, like crossing Route 20?
The crossing Route 20, whether to do an additional crosswalk or use the three crosswalks, which is like, okay, you're gonna have to cross three times, we make a new crosswalk and cross once. Then the other one is, um, going over the, uh, DPW property that there's like a, it's Lawrence Street, there's a big, there's a big. Boop, 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 something like that, and, uh, the question is, do you build a bridge over it? And we're like, no, 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 that's too expensive, well, what else do you do? Well, then you have to walk all the way back to Route 9. And then the state probably doesn't want pedestrian paths along Route 9, so can we cut into this person's property if they give us an easement, we heard the hotel gentleman say, we can have an easement to go on his property, but there's a few other property owners that we may need to. Talk nicely to, to get that going, just, I didn't mean to jump in on like a, but it does relate to all what we're talking about, that connects.
Trails.
That connects, like, that arrive, the whole housing complex over there, like, that connects that to, um. Northboro Crossing.
Yeah, economic development is our visitors, you know, that hike and then go to our stores and, yeah, absolutely.
Should we follow up with Carrie Salwa, remember she did that, that presentation for us at the Senior Center?
Yeah.
On.
Oh, right.
And that was very interesting what she said, you know, it, it's capitalizing on trails.
Yeah.
Um, so, wh- what I'm hearing is that we, we should all be thinking about some, some details for this committee and. Take up discussion at, um, at a next meeting, when we kind of refine this a little bit? Is everyone in agreement with that?
Yep, I think everyone should just brainstorm.
Okay. So we'll pass on motion number nine, correct? All right, so wait a second, we have, um. Public comment guidelines, and Mike, you were nice enough to.
Nice enough or brave enough? No, uh, yeah, thank, thank you, Madam Chair.
And everyone has a copy of this.
Yeah.
I think you have a copy now?
Yes, I do.
Yeah, it was, you know, this kind of came out of, um, you know, being on the board for, you know, this is my, uh, my second year. This meeting isn't a very good example, but we've had plenty of meetings where, from my perspective, um, you know, sometimes public comment almost seems like a sixth member of the board. Um, so it was just trying to come up with some ways that other, uh, public boards, school committees, uh, uh. Kind of implement public comment to kind of have some level of control, some guideline on it to make sure you're running a, uh, an efficient meeting. Uh, so the idea was to, to maybe try and keep public comment to sort of more defined areas of the agenda, uh, beginning, middle and end, um, to not necessarily have. Public comment for each and every item, unless it's obviously a public hearing where, where you, you have that, that piece, like, when you, when you read the opening, right, public, um, what's the, what's the line, right, public access isn't, um. I'm blanking on it, what?
Where law doesn't require it.
Right, right, so, um, you know, so it's the idea of trying to have some guidelines on it, um, you know, obviously, anybody who comes in as a subject matter expert or town, town staff or, or whatever, they're not subject to this, but. You know, we'll, we'll have lots of members, either prior members or current members of other boards and committees. Basically commenting in public comment and, and given a lot of time, um, obviously you want to be respectful to their positions, but, right, you're, we're, we're running a, a business meeting and, and trying to kind of move things along, so. That was sort of where, where this kind of came from, it's not trying to disregard the public's input or the public's comment. Or, or, or to, to say that it's, it's not important, it's the idea of, um, what could we maybe do as we run our meeting a little bit more efficiently? Uh, you know, that could be certain members not thinking they're so persuasive and getting to the point more. I'll be the first one to admit that.
Guilty.
You know, so that, that's where it was coming from, was the idea and, you know, and limiting the three minutes and, and trying to just kind of keep things, uh, kind of keep things moving along. Uh, and just applying the same rules to everybody and just trying to make it, make it fair and make it efficient, so, um, you know. I, I don't, it's not something I necessarily think we need to take a vote on, I'm just kind of curious, you know, if it's, um. If anybody else had sort of like the same kind of observation, uh, about sort of sometimes almost the public comment being almost like a filibuster or a sixth member of the, of the committee. Uh, of our board and kind of sometimes slows things down, so.
Laura?
I love the idea of shortening our meetings up because I don't do well late at night. Um, Mike, I do worry about limiting like public participation, but if there's ways that we could hold ourselves accountable to some of those rules. I would love it if we could look at some things that we can do before looking at ways to, you know, reduce other people's contributions.
Right, and, and one thing is, you know, I know it's, right, somebody makes a public comment, we, you know, other, other committees don't necessarily respond in the moment, um, you kind of withhold the response because then you end up. Generally every time in a level of back and forth that just takes additional time. Um, that's not to say that the person's not owed a response, they could get a response at some point later in the meeting, some point after the meeting, you know, there's instances where it's kind of almost like. Hey, ask the town staff member or department head any question you want, where it's maybe not sort of related to the agenda or the topics at hand. Um, people can always reach out 24/7 through phone, through email, through whatever, um.
Hopefully not 24/7 by phone.
They could leave a message.
3 a.m.
But i- i- in kind of those other instances where, you know, you end up kind of in a back and forth and then, yeah, maybe they were supposed to be limited to three minutes, but it's kind of gone long and it's. You're, whenever you end up in a back and forth, whether it's a positive interaction or maybe a negative interaction, it just kind of adds time, um, so it's again in that idea of trying to just run maybe a more efficient meeting, so.
I just have one funny thing really quick, when I was health agent here, speaking at 3 a.m., um, you know this, the barbecue place?
Texas barbecue?
Texas barbecue, so there was a complaint, a neighbor who's no longer around and I, this is why I'm saying this, but she would call me like when she was smelling the smoke because it was a complaint, so she'd call me. But you know when your phone rings at 3:00 in the morning and I'm like, hello? She'd be like, I smell it again, and I'm like, oh my God.
Oh my goodness.
Brisket?
Yeah, I would love that smell. Yeah, right, yeah, Jacob.
I mean, I, um, I'm looking at these, I think these are all great suggestions, um, and I tend to agree with kind of the, the overall sentiment, um, that we could do better. Um, at the same time, like my, whatever we did or whatever guidance we'd have, I, I trust our chair, like. Right now it's Julianne, whoever our chair is, like, part of what we're saying is we trust that person to ultimately be the ultimate veto on anything, whether we have a guideline or not, like, I would always want the chair to have the flexibility. To be like, actually, this justifies hearing a little more in this instance, and we're not, each one of us isn't always necessarily going to agree with how the chair treated the particular comment or whatever, but. Um, I would always want to have the ultimate decision on implementation on whether they can go 10 seconds over the three minutes or whatever to be.
You know, I think that's reasonable and I guess that's kind of, uh, goes unsaid, right, obviously, it's the, the chair, uh, running the meeting, so it's, that's at your discretion or vice chair in, in, uh, in, in their stead, so. Um, yeah, these were sort of all subject to guidelines, not something that necessarily I would see as hard and fast, right, there's always room to, to, to maneuver things, so yeah, that would. The, this, this isn't intended to, um, handcuff or, or, or restrict you to, to run them, run the, the meeting as you judge and, and see fit. Um, it's just kind of ideas taken from other public bodies and other materials that they've put out about how to run efficient meetings, and these are, are a lot of them are, are from there.
If I can, um, just jump in real, I, I, I like how you have like the opportunities in, in more than one spot, which is for our. Not a statement of like self-importance, but like, we deal with some kind of big stuff here that people care about a lot and, um, sometimes it's at the beginning of the meeting, sometimes it's at the end of the meeting and, um, having more than one opportunity. I thi- I think is great, a critical, a very bad criticism that I have for another committee is they have it one time, it's open for like five seconds, and if you miss the window. And then they change when the window is from meeting to meeting, so I have literally sat through two meetings back to back where there was a person. Who sat through the entire meeting thinking that they could comment at the end, wanted to make a comment at the end, and they were shut down, there was another person who came to the meeting at the beginning, wanted to make a comment at the beginning, and they're like, oh, we moved comments to the end now. And they're like, well, I can't stay till the end, I came to give my comment now, too bad, and then they had to leave the meeting to go about their business, I'm like, that is, that should not be happening in our town, in my opinion.
You know, that brings up a point, should, should some of these guidelines be standardized?
Uh, I mean, I don't want to like micromanage other committees, other than just my statement is like, we're serving the people.
Yeah, but, but people should know whether they have to come at the beginning or wait till the end and should.
Well, that's why I think to have it systematic, so everybody knows, comments are in the beginning. I hate to be like Holden, Holden, but we went through the same thing, so we took all of the public comments in the beginning, and if we had an answer. At the end of the meeting, we would provide the answer, if not, we would get back to the person, um, at our next meeting.
But what about, so that was for, for select board?
Yeah.
What about just, you know, a standard, if every committee could have public comments at the beginning of the meeting?
Really say that because even like, for instance, the rec committee, they're very like, e- even open space, they're very casual and, you know.
Required to have public comment, to Mike's point, some of the law doesn't even require it to them, to the extent they do, it's usually as a courtesy.
Right.
Which I think is a great courtesy.
Yeah, but like, yeah.
Rec always lets if people show up to talk.
Well, that's what I mean, like, some meetings are more relaxed, select board meeting, we do ta- discuss serious stuff and. When a person, it's just like, right, our normal behavior, if a person asks a question, we're like, oh, yeah, and then a whole other tangent starts, so that's why we're here till like midnight, that's why you have to have something that's more systematic. Because we want to answer everybody, but it would just take forever, you know?
I, I also think, um, so I. Totally feel what you, that, there was a few meetings that went, I think, a bit sideways, public comment, and that they were things that people were passionate about. And we have a lot of same people talking to the point where people weren't even leaving the podium, they were staying there for the whole time as if they was gonna just kind of do that. Um, so I don't know, like, I do, I, I actually wouldn't be opposed to having public comment at the beginning and the end, and then nothing in the middle, and then having. And then monitoring it based on, like, are we hearing the same stuff, is it contentious, is it contentious meeting that people just want to. Be able to say the same thing over and over again in different ways versus like getting like, if someone had an insight at the end of this meeting and they were cared about the town enough to be able to. To, to want to watch this whole meeting, wants to say something at 10:45, I'm not opposed to that, like, I think we just, we need to police some of the behaviors of. The same people saying the same stuff all the time in that meeting, and I know it's hard to do because we're all friends with everyone, but, but at same time, it's like, okay, three minutes and we're done and we're moving on.
And then you get a major, like, if, if you hold the meeting, middle of the meeting for business of the board, you get so much more done.
Mm-hmm.
And then, uh, again, they'll still have their opportunity at the end, so.
Well, I, I'll use, um, accepting the Complete Streets grant as an example, there was a lot of discussion and there were. At least one resident who made some really good points at, uh, during that discussions, so I. You know, I, I. I'm not sure that I want to be so strict about public comment and not allowing it during the meeting, there are some topics that. Uh, and it, and I, my, in my experience, it's been very helpful when people.
Would it be helpful if I just put the timer on when people start and then just like help cover it?
Yeah, because, yeah, if you stay consistent, like, everybody gets da-da-da and, and you don't let Joe Schmo ramble on, but then you cut somebody else off, so that's why a consistent time allowance.
So I can help with that, and then if we want to postpone answers till the end?
Yeah, I, I don't think that we should respond to people.
Okay.
That's, that's, that gets into almost dangerous territory too.
Right, because it's not on the agenda.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, and, and that would be really helpful, because it'll be interesting to see if, um, how much time actually public comment takes, might not take as much time as we think. Right?
Didn't in this meeting.
My three minutes is up.
Just setting the tone, Mark.
Okay, all right.
Thank you though for bringing it up.
And, and you're right, I mean, I can, I can do better, I think, with that, all right, so next is, um, did everyone get a chance to look at. Our select board goals, um, and I think the way this has been consolidated is really great. I think it's important for people to kind of see this because we're, you know, universally, I think we're really. Going to concentrate on transparency and finance and, um. So I don't think that there's a vote on this, is there? No. Um, but does anyone have any additions or objections to any of this?
Through the chair?
Yes, please.
I think these are great, um, I think there's tactical things we should probably spend more time on as a, as a, as a board, so one of the things that I'm thinking about is. And we've talked about it, but now it's kind of holding one another accountable, we're gonna get into budget season.
Uh huh.
And consistent formats to see, hey, this is the headcount template, I expect you to fill out, it's gonna show headcount the past three years. Um, headcount now and headcount requests in the next, and then that we get, look at the department budgets in a consistent way. Um, here's how we want you to put your asks, like, there's some run-of-the-business stuff that you don't really need in there, like printer, copy pa- copier paper, that kind of stuff is pretty basic, but then there's things that we want to be able to like, have discussion around, so. I'd like consistent templates to be able to look across those departments as we get into the budget season.
So did you see the, um, one I emailed you guys?
I saw one that was like, and one, and I, um, that had, it was from like Department of Public Works, and it was just like, but that wasn't that useful.
Um, that was fiscal year 26, so you didn't see the 27, that was, I think, yeah, because, well, whatever the question was, that's why I sent you that template, but fiscal year 27, for instance. I, I said we have the headcounts, we have, um, there were other things, um, last meeting that you were interested in, and I think we have already implemented them, but. I, I guess it, it would be helpful because we've already started budget season, so it would be helpful if you guys would write down what you really want to see, just email me and Jason.
I, um, I really liked Jason's headcount template, historical and current in variance that he had when we had our meeting at the library on the town budget.
Yep.
I thought that was excellent, I thought, I thought it was very transparent.
See, DPW just came in with their new budget, they have all of that information, I met with him today.
That would be really, that would be really useful to see.
It, it was all this, I mean, he had everything from, you know, fleet to this to that, I, I mean, it was like this, so.
Yeah, but to see the roster, okay, we've got X amount of people and, and then.
Yep, we have that, yep.
I think that would be useful, um. And then, you know, I mean, I think if we look at a couple of budget templates, probably find one that centers to be something that we think that gives enough transparency, um. Isn't, I mean, none of these should be overly a huge ask, if you've done the work on your budgets, it's just a matter of how you.
I can guarantee we have anything you'd want.
Yeah, it's, yeah, yeah, um.
Are you looking more for like, almost like executive summary level of it or more detail?
We do.
A bit more detail, because executive summary is probably not enough, like, I'm looking more in terms of like, uh, I'm the line manager. And I want to understand what's going on and, like, executive summary, you can kind of like get well-to-sleep and not really know what to do. Um, but if you get into like a department budget, you know, I'd want to understand, um, understand all that in the budget and what it is.
So Scott just came in, it was, you know, whatever, if he asked for a truck, da-da-da, why, you know, um, why? Yep. So Scott just came in, it was, you know, whatever, if he asked for a truck, da-da-da, why, you know, um, why he can't. Rent or why can't, so everything's lined up.
And I'm less worried about financial planning committee. I think that's pretty, there's a lot of detail and conversation appropriations.
Capital, yeah.
Like that's where we, I, I think that's where I'm like not as clear.
Yeah, even.
And specifically how much money we spend at the DPW for the capabilities we have in that org is, I'd wanna better understand that. We spend so much money there. Yet we can't hire two people to paint a police station and figure out how to resource that. We pay hundreds of thousands of dollars for like contractors that were basically, could have been anyone. They weren't even, they were just. I thought they'd be awesome for prevailing wage, which here's naivety. I thought prevailing wage was like, wow, we're gonna get some awesome labor. Um, it just means you're paying, paying a lot of money for.
Well, you go, you have to take the lowest and most responsi- responsible bidder. So hopefully, I mean. In, in a lot of cases, you might not know.
It, it's actually, it's actually, well, I think there are wage rates that are really high, like seventy-five dollars for paint or something that off-market, but, but I'm thinking like things like. When I look at Scott and his mandate is huge and I feel like he's like subsidizing a lot of part of town that I don't even know about. I'm like, oh, you're paying for those bathrooms? They're fifteen, eighteen grand? How, how visible is that? And then like, and then the painting of the police station, it's like, all right, can, can you resource over the summer and get, and res- and find out how to. Hire a couple of people and even if on temp basis to paint a police station and do it for like, these are the conversations I like to have at least, and I think the budgets would help us have those.
And, yeah, so I, I already said this, but like, it really would behoove you guys to just. I know there's liaisons, but not everyone can make a meeting. You guys are at a meeting tonight, you have your personal lives, but if we could allocate like one person to go to like the. Financial planning, one person to go to the appropriation.
I like that.
Just so it's, and, and it's really broken down.
Who has appropriations?
I did, and I went to my last meeting and I'm waiting to report on that. Thank you.
What I do find too, for the ones you can't make, you can always watch.
Yes.
So it's like not that hard and then you could just try and email.
I came in person and I sat on that chair.
For appropriations, while I'm looking for each update. Anyways.
What I'm doing for you guys anyway, regardless, whenever we meet and by then I'll have all my information, like whether it's financial planning or da-da-da-da. And I'm keeping track of it. So if you guys say, I don't know about that, I'll say, oh yeah, you did because I emailed you on da-da-da-da. All of the full budget information and any changes that come along. Now, mind you, financial planning, they're just hearing everybody at this point. Appropriations hasn't started. Well, we started our first meeting, but not with department heads. And then they start to like go through the budget. So they'll hear the person out first and then based upon, you know, the asks and what, where we are with our financial situation, then they start to cut, cut, cut. So it's, it's a good follow-through, but I will make sure that I tell you, okay, they, you know, dox this, they da-da-da. So. You'll have a briefing of, you know, what's happening at each meeting.
On email?
Yeah, yeah.
If you could kinda pull, hey, here's the two things you need to know, that would be helpful.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, definitely. Like here are the asks for.
Like a recurring.
Like how did they solve?
Part of her report.
Yeah, yeah.
Kind of, sorry.
Yeah, no, that's, this is, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
Yeah, to make sure, cuz it's easy to just kinda, it's hard to stay, yeah, and make, I think, make sure we're all on point a bit.
Yeah, exactly. I know. It'll be like a separate budget. Like, and that's what I've been trying to do is, is subtitle it budget. So if I was looking for something, I could, you know, go back to it.
Cool.
Jacob.
I was gonna say, highlight would be, how are they solving the eight million dollar roof problem? That would be like, top of my inbox if you figured that one out.
Well, they kind of fainted when that came up, so.
Anyway.
Yep, that was it.
Yep.
And that wasn't in the capital plan? The roof?
The Z school roof? It was, yeah, it was.
Not for eight million.
Not in future years, it came out of nowhere.
Oh, in future years, yeah.
We should know about a roof that needs to be replaced in two years before today.
Yeah.
On anything, and this is like.
You mean, it, it, yeah, it wasn't on the capital plan like last year?
Like, this roof is on the plan, just so you know. You saw it.
Oh, yeah.
It's like two or three years out.
Yeah. DPW facilities are on the plan. The DPW manager, he's got like twelve million dollars for an outside building.
Sorry, I kinda lost track on where we are on the budget.
Okay. Okay, so um, any other discussion about?
Our goals.
Um, so I just um, have a question. Your evaluation will come up like after town meeting.
I think it says in April, by April. That's what the.
By April.
Isn't that what the change is?
So these goals are very important because it will be based on these.
Yep.
Right.
Oh, flying colors. It's so easy.
Absolutely.
No, 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 I, I get it. A, a lot of it is, right, financial. I mean, we're gonna, you know.
With that comment, if I can add, Mike, you know, I, I think you've been doing a good job at. Being responsive and solving problems promptly as they're presented to you, as I have commented in the past. That's not on my goals for you, but like, consider that as an ongoing.
No, I, I appreciate it. Yeah, and of course, these are our main priorities, but everything else comes into play during an evaluation and, I mean, if we go. If we go with um, you know, about the same um, evaluation process as last year, it does ask all of those questions. Is she responsive? Is she, you know, does she have a good relationship with, so, yeah.
And, and that evaluation tool, um, maybe for the new members, if you have it handy.
I do. Yeah, I will um, email that to you.
It, well, there's plenty of time, but it's always good to, okay. All right, so where are we? Um. Are we all set to move on from goals? Any other comments? Got that. All right, then reports. I'm gonna start with Jacob because he.
Appropriations, had their kickoff meeting, they set their schedule. I won't bore you with the schedule, but they haven't heard any departments by then, uh, yet. They got largely, what I'll say is sort of an updated, but mostly the same version of the presentation our finance director gave us on updating us on. Where we are in fiscal twenty-six and what fiscal twenty-seven is looking like and what are the dangers of things that could trigger an override need and things like that. It's. Basically the same stuff that was in our memo that we reviewed when he looked at us. I'm not gonna rehash that.
Yeah.
They did have a conversation about um. Recall, we took, we decided not to do the two hundred thousand for general stabilization. And, but we didn't exactly direct where it should go instead, so by like mathematical default, it just ends up in the bottom line, which. Says save it up for the next year's free cash. Um, that was brought up in their committee of like, is that the best idea with that? And I. Caused me to question like, probably not. Probably not the best idea to save it for next year, uh, since the idea was to, to not reserve it and use it instead to reduce the need uh, for the levy. So what that would actually operationally do is meaning instead of putting that two hundred thousand down at the bottom of the line, the preference would actually be say. Uh, where, where our policy that we kind of voted on and approved was like about five hundred thousand dollars of free cash to be used in operating budget. It would be, take the two hundred and say you could use up to seven hundred thousand dollars of free cash for operating budget. Points that were made at that committee, they had a discussion about it. And it essentially, it was brought up that the five hundred thousand dollar policy of don't use more than five hundred thousand dollars of cat, free cash for operating budget. Was done like fifteen years ago when we had a total budget of fifty million dollars. And the point was made that like, our total budget doubled, wouldn't it make sense to follow the proportion? The finance director's counterpoint was the same point he made to us, is you don't wanna have too much of operation being funded by free cash because that's a structural deficit. But on the other hand, another person on the appropriation committee made the point that I thought was a good point, which was um. Under-budgeting our receipts line item, in other words, saying we're gonna receive X and then actually receiving a million and a half more than X from user fees and excise taxes and stuff like that. Is also a structural deficit. We should budget to receive closer to the amount we're actually gonna receive. It's not a perfect science, but we shouldn't purposely. Under-budget our receivables for the year because if you budget appropriately for the receivables, you'll have less free cash, which. Some would say, me included, is ideal, um, cuz it means you only collected what you needed. So they had a discussion about that and I asked them if they wanted to vote to ask us to reconsider that policy. They kind of noodled around it and they didn't officially like vote as an appropriation. Committee to ask us to revisit that, but I'm just reporting to you that that was a discussion that they had. And they set their schedule and uh, talked about a lot of these big capital things that are coming up. Fire station building committee, I think are largely already reported on for you all, that extra, the hundred and thirty-five that we approved. There may have been one other invoice that seemed to be.
The fire station building committee?
Yeah.
Yeah, didn't you say thirty thousand?
A hundred and thirty-five, which was a combination.
I didn't approve that yet.
So I, we recommended for you.
Oh, okay, okay, yeah.
So we, we always just make recommendations.
Okay.
One other thing, just putting it out there, I think I've said it before, the reports that we got, hundred and seventy-four truckloads. The total amount, I believe with the one thirty-five relating to contaminated soil, not putting blame, not saying who's at fault, not saying anything about that, but the total amount that I think we've spent so far is. Somewhere between the one point one to one point two, including the one thirty-five that I just mentioned. Should be around that range. And there is an unknown but non-zero amount to go going forward. So that's my report on that.
In that area where the trailer is now?
Right.
Yeah.
And I don't remember. Oh, and I already reported on open space. Um, they recommended to move forward with the, they. They recommended, they voted to recommend four to one, I think, um, the Blake Street project for the CPC.
A letter of support.
A letter of support. Eight hundred and fifty K.
Four to one.
Four to one, yeah. Not a surprise that I was the one.
Planning board also recommended support.
Three to one, correct. And I think those are, so the trails, we talked about, um, really trying to get some, um. I think they, the next step on that was figuring out how much a design was going to cost and we do have the individual who said he was gonna donate some of his own time to help do the design. So no specific not, dollar number on that yet, but there is some substantial amount of design that needs to be done to make that trail work, it seems like. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. John, do you have a report tonight?
Financial planning committee's in the midst of doing all, getting of the budgets and there's, so they're working through it. Lot of things that weren't forecasted on the budget that are coming this year. There's like a two and a half million dollar fire truck that wasn't on there that the committee's wrestling with that.
The tower truck, right?
The tower truck. So we get a, well, a bigger fire station to put more stuff in. So I think they're trying to figure out the need and I think some good questions going on from the committees, so they're wrestling with that. The eight million dollar roof um, for Z, you know, wrestling with that, again, not projected. So generally speaking, like you should have. An idea we're gonna spend next two or three years and these things weren't in there. They just come up and now they're trying to figure out, okay, well, what does this mean versus the needs and the money that we thought we had, so.
That was the MSBA, right? The half, so they would pay half. They say it's exactly half. It's not, it's a little less than.
A little less, but eight is still four.
So it's, yeah, four.
It's just, it's just, it's hard to get your head around these numbers, um, especially when we saw the, um, the pace. Presentation and what they were, what's accomplished for like seven hundred grand for a new roof. I saw that on there and it was bigger than the roof that we need for Z. And then a mi- it's a million and a half for, and, and you're seeing these real things, then these town things, like eight million dollars for a roof, um. That wasn't contemplated, like, so they're, I commend the committee, like they're, they're doing a lot of work, asking good questions and, um, but. They're presented with some hard things in this, in this budget cycle.
Yep.
The, those, those municipal costs, the prevailing wage, we, we have to talk to the.
Do we have, do we have elected officials in here next on the fifteenth?
Yeah.
Oh, they are?
So we, Diane and I were just at um, an MMA conference and um, somebody from the state comes and speaks about legislative priorities. And one of the topics was that on prevailing wage and da-da-da. And they said, we're not gonna say. It's, you know, ignored, but it's, it's not getting any traction.
What do you mean getting it? Oh, to, to do a, I just think.
Right.
The, the financial conditions of towns is making it so the towns can't afford to do things that are this much off-market anymore. And we're seeing it in our neighboring communities. We're feeling it here in Northborough and um, and we're, you know, and people moved to Northborough because it was, you know. More affordable now the towns and we're closing that gap really quick. And so it's like, I don't know, I think, I think the prevailing wage one is one I really would like to understand if that's a serious conversation or that's just kinda. Something that they know we wanna hear.
He brought it up and he said, it's not ignored amongst, you know, our conversations at the state, but it's definitely not, you know. Building traction. There's, no.
How do you get a, um, how do you get a question on Massachusetts State?
I know, like ten, ten thousand people.
Just to put on the, on the ballot and just be like.
Actually.
We should ask um, the reps when they come in.
It was fifty thousand for something that I signed for an issue that we got, the legislators overturned on. I don't know if that fifty thousand applies to everything, but.
If, if a project is less than fifty thousand dollars, you don't have to pay prevailing wage, correct? Is that what it is?
I don't think that's.
Yeah, no, so, less than, so if it's, no, between ten thousand and fifty thousand. You'd have to put it out, um, notification, but fifty thousand or more, it's like a full on bid. So it's, that's when everything, and, and if you think about all of our projects, they're all over fifty thousand dollars. It's like, if there's something small, we're just doing it ourselves. And actually, that came up. In appropriations or financial planning, they said, should we just like, would it be cheaper to hire more staff? Like with these expertise, like a carpenter, an engineer, a da-da, but then it's like, no, cuz then we're paying the health insurance and we're paying.
For the next fifty years when you retire.
Right, and, and it, there's only specific projects, so we're not gonna, who's gonna work for us for like. One job because they'd have to be employed by the town and, you know, it's just, but it is, it's, it's driving us into a hole.
Okay, so if we are meeting with the legislators in two weeks.
Yep, the fifteenth.
You should give us your topics that you want discussed.
We have that letter, right, that we, didn't we vote on a, a letter of topics?
Yeah, you guys have done that in the past, I think.
Right, didn't we, did the miss board do that?
Yeah, we did. But that wasn't, that was like in the past. Angie did send out an email to our department heads to see if there's anything, you know, they needed. Let me check to see on where we're at with that, but.
Is it, is it suitable to talk to them about health insurance? Like.
That's not the one.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely it is, yeah.
Okay, all right, we're getting off topic here.
Yeah.
Back to reports. John, do you have any other reports?
That is my report.
Thank you. Mike?
Uh, yes, so reports from the Peaslee committee. We have a meeting tomorrow night at, at seven o'clock. Where we'll be giving an update on the designer contract negotiations with Flansburgh Architects, the, the architect that was hired. One thing that has come up, so the total appropriation approved at town meeting for the feasibility study was nine hundred thousand. The negotiated total, including OPM and that designer, that architect, is nine hundred and thirty thousand. So the school committee at their meeting on Wednesday is gonna be taking a formal vote, I believe it'll be on Wednesday, um, when they're meeting. Formal vote on funding that remaining thirty thousand, um, yeah, on the meeting on December third. So the signing of that contract would take place after that vote. That way full funding is, is insured. So um. Obviously not a place you kinda wanna be, right, uh, right at the beginning of a project as far as feasibility, um, but it's sort of. You know, with MSBA, they certainly provide a lot, um, you know, up to forty, fifty percent of funding as they describe it. But it also sort of costs a lot to do business with them. Um, and I think that's another example of that. But, you know, still a worthy project, but just wanted to make sure you guys were aware of what was, what was going on, so. Yeah, so that meeting's tomorrow night, uh, so I have a, uh, have that and then um. No other reports.
Thank you. Laura?
Okay, I have a few things, so, sorry. Saturday's gonna be the annual tree lighting in honor of Neil Ellsworth. The event starts at five PM. There's gonna be. Music, food, pizza, hot cocoa, cookies and candy canes while supplies last and they'll also be taking donations for the food pantry and Toys for Tots. The community efforts committee would like to share a special thanks to the sponsors, including Northborough House of Pizza, Central and Federal. Uh, the community affairs committee would like to share a special thanks to the sponsors, including Northborough House of Pizza, Central and Federal Credit Union, and Fitzgerald Community School. And the fifth grade chorus will be singing. Also on Saturday, if you are a business owner and you want to join in the fun, you can host a merry market, open house, Seiba Cafe, craft, festival fun on Saturday, December sixth, and tag community affairs and/or email them to help spread the word, um, at the, at the tree lighting. There's the annual, sorry, the holiday trolley book sale coming up at the Friends of Northborough Library. That'll be hosted on Saturday and they'll have a great selection of books for gifts, including fiction, nonfiction for adults, teens and children, as well as brand new and sealed DVDs. The sale is on Friday, December fifth, from noon to five, and Saturday, December sixth, from nine thirty to four in the library meeting room. December thirteenth, we'll be Wreaths Across America at noon. I'll be presenting just a couple of words on behalf of the select board then. And, um, we meant to mention the scholarship committee auction is now live. Uh, so if you're interested, they've got a great selection of, of items up for auction, so be sure to check the website for that. And then the CPC applications that are currently being reviewed include a window restoration project for the Northborough Historical Society, a Blake Street, again, the Blake Street Park and Streetscape Improvement Project. And there's a request from the Northborough Affordable Housing Corp. for, uh, for more affordable housing. And that concludes my reports.
Thank you. And I have no report. All right, so, um, if there is any public comment, yes.
Add one more thing, since I want to be as thorough as I can on my reports since I'm being accused of not reporting. So, uh, this is kind of important, you may care about it. We also voted in FSBC, I just remembered. There's, uh, services called commissioning services that are done once a project's ready, which is essentially doing final testing up until like the final ceremony of opening the building, right? So, uh, they did a bid with three companies, including Colliers, our, our OPM has another division within their company who does these services. So they put in their bid first, uh, then they solicited bids from up to other companies. Uh, their bid was the lowest bid and it was for the same scope. I reviewed the RFP for it. I mean, I'm not an expert on commissioning services, but, uh, we asked quite a few questions up to, to test what they were saying. And, um, we ultimately did end up choosing to recommend accepting their bid, um, which was like.
Colliers or someone else?
Colliers, Colliers Commissioning Department's bid on the project. Um, and they showed us the records to show like, hey, we did our bid, our, we didn't bid in response to the other bids. We did our bid, the other bids were done to avoid, you know, conflict. And so primarily, I think we went based on the cheapest price. It also so happens that I think there is some efficiencies in engaging someone you're already engaged with, because there's just some efficiencies with that. The good news was, it's on a line item that they have like a hundred and fifty budgeted for, and this contract was like for forty-nine. There's a little more than the forty-nine that's not included in this RFP that's still within the one fifty, but they pretty strongly assured us it's, we're, we're probably going to come in under budget on those, uh, testing, final testing things, so. That's like testing the equipment in the building to make sure it all works correctly before we commission the building. So I felt like that was a good thing.
Okay, all right. Um, well, thank you for that. And Steph?
Um, okay. The school committee held its first round of budget discussions reflecting an eleven percent increase over last year. Additional budget sessions are anticipated. Uh, the TA finance director, um, and our whole finance team, um, met with, um, our partners, our new part, partners, Borcello Insurance, which they were phenomenal. They're our new insurance broker, but they work for us and they don't, you know, get a kickback from the insurance company, which is huge. So, um, yeah, that's where we were last round. Um, they were great, there's, they're projecting, um, we're changing our four percent to a twelve percent. It's as high as sixteen percent, but they said safely, you know, ballpark, go with a twelve percent, so that's what we're doing.
What does that mean?
Was it last year?
For insurance increase. In last year, we went from twenty-one percent to eighteen.
Wait, last year was an eighteen percent?
Eighteen percent, seventeen point nine to be exact. And this year, we estimated four percent at the summit because we thought, oh, I mean, we got hit hard, we're not gonna, and typically it's been lower than even three percent in years past, so. Um, so yeah, we had to bring that up to, yeah, twelve percent and, um, yeah, that brought us up to another six hundred and some odd thousand.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
No, I was, I was just gonna ask, and that's for basically like similar coverage to what?
So we're looking at, we're actually looking at more of a, um, HSA, so.
I was gonna say, is high deductible?
High deductible plan, yeah, so that's, that's a part of it too. And it, it's, a lot of it is in the marketing and, God, I saw, I'm like, and that's what we did in Holden, but we, but we had to do that in Holden because, um, it, you're gonna see though, all the younger kids that are coming off their parents' plans, so it's like twenty-six and up. Um, if you have a good marketing team, and I have to strategize who that would be, maybe in the TA's office, maybe in our treasury's office. But you really do have to take the time to sit down when you're onboarding, um, employees and go through the importance of an HSA for them. So it mostly, you know, when kids are young, they're healthy, they don't spend a lot of mi- they're gonna keep that money in their paycheck. So if they don't go to the doctors a lot, and we're not telling people, if you have to go, of course, go. But you really see where your money's going and it's not, so out of, you know, just do as I do in our town administration office in Holden, we all changed to an HSA and I loved it. I thought it was great.
And is that an option now through this new broker in the?
So, yeah, so we, we met and discussed like where we want to be, um, we asked them, hey, how, what, what can we do to decrease our, um, rate? And we already have the opt-out program, um, so that, that doesn't have a lot of traction. People will do it if their spouse has a better plan, yep.
I was trying to figure a good place to ask a question. That's a good place to ask a question. Are we just offering like a Cadillac plan compared to market? The reason I ask that.
No.
Bec- the reason I'm gonna ask is because like, the private plan that I have through my employer, like, it's gone up three percent every year for the last ten years, including the last two years. Pre- premiums with basically the other terms being the same, the coverage being the same. I don't want to get into details about what we're covering, what we're not covering, but I'm like, maybe we just have a better pool, I guess. I don't know the answer to these questions, but like.
And we have.
Do we need to reanalyze like what our coverages are in terms of like?
Oh, no, 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 oh, that's, that's why we have a broker, we're analyzing the heck out of it. And we have a great pool of people because the larger amount, we have, you know, the regional school system, uh, Southborough, the town. So we have a lot of people, claims, we're high, we're pretty high.
And I don't want to get into that, there's nothing we can do about that.
No, there isn't, but that, that's a huge part of it. But the GLP-1 drug is not, um, being offered through our insurance anymore, which will.
That's what I was just gonna ask. There's a lot of people who cover that for weight loss and there's a lot of people who don't. And I'm not trying to get into a debate about whether that's right or wrong. I'm telling you, that's a huge expensive drug that the use of which has skyrocketed over the last five years.
Yeah.
And if you're covering it, you're paying out the nose, if you're not.
Yep, and the numbers were high.
And so there's certainly indications that always should be covered, but, um, sorry.
So GLP-1 was covered in our twenty twenty-five healthcare plan and it's not covered in twenty twenty-six?
Wait, what year? Yes, it, it won't be covered in twenty twenty-six.
And they're still increasing by twelve percent?
So they're estimating this, it's, but that's based on the prior year, so it's our claims for the prior year.
Are they doing the analysis where they're looking at claims on, and so that's a piece, like to make sure that if there's any changes in coverage or? Is it true that there's unlimited imaging at, at little to no cost?
Yes.
That's off market, that's way off market. So like, how do we fix that?
We have to bargain it.
No, well.
No, I'm, I'm, no, but I'm saying it's in their contract, so we have to bargain.
In their contract, unlimited imaging at no cost in perpetuity.
Um, I don't want to say the exact, but basically it was, um, re- reimbursed. I, I should see if there is any financial, like, um.
This, this is what I'm getting.
I don't know how many years ago that was done, I think quite a few years ago.
I do think we have a Cadillac program, which is like, I'm not.
But you're right.
I'm not saying that's a good thing or a bad thing, but, but if, but if people aren't taking the offer to, of however many thousand dollars to go onto your, uh, significant other's plan or whatever, it's because our plan's better.
Of course. So, so the offer almost is muted, like.
Or even retirement purposes, you know?
But, but I think, so a couple of things is like, based on my six months of union experience, like, we may, we may be generous in a lot of our union contracts. We're, we're off market, maybe, I don't know that for a fact. And our healthcare tends to feel like it's off market or different than the rest of maybe folks are feeling. Um, so I don't know how this board gets engaged in that, but I think we need to start to have some.
Yeah, we're already engaged, especially in the health aspect of it.
Board is, who on the board is engaged in this?
On health, the insurance?
Yeah.
Well, I'm, I'm definitely, this is gonna be a conversation all budget period, absolutely.
But the questions we're asking and.
Oh, and, and those are, that was part of our meeting with the J, JPA, absolutely.
What is the, what is the?
Board doesn't usually ask specific questions like this, but, so it's excellent that you're.
Well, I don't know if we've seen these kind of cost escalations, like it's our obligation to ask these questions because it's like not sustainable.
Absolutely not.
Something breaks.
Fourteen percent on top of nineteen percent, it's like.
So how much is the premium for a single person in a family for our?
Oh, God, don't ask me this, I don't know.
Please, please find out.
Oh, I, I, I'll give you everything, we have everything broken down, yeah.
I just wanna, I wanna better understand this because these are things we've gotta, we gotta make sure we, we're digging into.
Oh, of course we're digging into it. This is like our number one priority, it's our number one expense besides wages. It's ridiculous. And, but this isn't a Northborough problem, this is a world problem. Every single town around, if you don't believe me.
I'm going, my premiums went up three percent every year for the last ten years, so it's not a problem.
I don't know.
I don't know if other towns have unlimited imaging that you're allowed to use as much as you want, they covered GLP-1s last year.
We, we don't have, honestly, not a lot of people use it. I, I don't know.
I've never seen any data, I have no idea. It's all, everything's anecdotal. Like, I have no idea other than, you know.
Right, yeah.
Very high.
I can tell you, I can tell you, I just can't tell you now because I wasn't prepared.
Just forward me all the data you're telling me and then I'll, then I'll have it and I'll be like, oh, wow, that's correct. But like anecdotal conversations don't give me any facts to anchor on. And that's where I, and I'm not trying to, like, I get it, like, it's, there's a lot of, um, tension in the system right now. But like, we need to be able to look at the data to figure it out, because I just can't.
Yeah, we have experts doing it and I will, trust me, I will give you all the information we have, but don't think it's all being exposed.
Experts?
Uh, Borcello, Borcello Insurance. No, but they are, that's what their expertise is in. They, they know more than us.
They're the brokers.
I understand, but they're the brokers, I'm not, and, and you.
But they work for us, we change the whole damn.
On behalf of the insurance companies, they work for us.
No, 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 our last group did.
No, I, I hear all this and I hear we're not covering GLP-1s and we did. And I'm hearing we're still escalating twelve percent off of an increase of eighteen percent last year.
This upcoming plan.
Yeah.
They're not going to be covering GLP-1 drugs.
Right.
Off of way, way management.
But, but, yeah, sure, but it's probably other indication, but I guess, I, I, I think maybe we're saying the same things, just we're missing each other. I'm hearing all these things you're saying.
Yes.
And I'm still seeing a twelve percent increase.
Yes, because it's not, it's not based on future years, of course, it's based on our history and our claims. And, and it's not only just Northborough, it's Southborough, it's the school.
Is it possible, because we're, like, it's from a report, is it possible to get the information and then come back to this?
Yeah, I mean, we can't.
First time I've talked with the board, Laura.
No, I understand, but it's getting late.
I, it always gets late and unfortunately, like, our agendas are super long and we spend a lot of time on things. This is the stuff that's important and it's always at the end.
Putting her on the spot and asking her.
So, so what I'm gonna do, so we don't get into this, is just provide you with the information I have at hand.
That would be helpful.
Absolutely.
I just think the two things that I think the town, if you said two things that I'd want to really, if there, if you had a magic wand, it would be prevailing wage and it would be health insurance. And I think, so like, if we're spending a little time on it now, because we've never talked about the board since we've been here, I apologize, but it's important.
No, but it's just late and if there's a way that we can get this information, so we're not putting her on the spot asking for these numbers.
Understood, but I learned a lot. I did, there's a lot of stuff I didn't understand until Stephanie articulated about the differences, so it may have taken a few minutes, but I thought it was important.
I blame myself, I asked about the HSA, sorry.
Thanks, I thought it was a great question. Good discussion, but let's move on. Was there, sorry, are we done? Do you need a motion?
I think she's still going through reports.
I was going through my report, I don't even know what the heck.
We wanna.
Here, do you want?
Maybe we'll. We'll just make sure it's in the minutes.
Wait, I just wanted to write my, uh.
Do we still have an executive session?
I'm good with it being there, we read, we can read it.
We still have an executive session.
Yes, but you'll get a three-minute break.
I had my notes though. Okay, anyway, um, where was I? Oh, that was, oh, jeez, I only was in the first part. I have my version, because my version I highlighted, so I could just get rid of something. Here it is, I got it. Okay, here we go. Uh, planning and development, the town continues to work on the complete streets grant with a design firm preparing the project to be advertised for bid in January or February with construction targeted for April. The planning department held preliminary meeting for a three-lot subdivision on Howard Street near Green Street intersection. St. Obane is advancing its application for a twenty-two thousand square foot addition with a public hearing scheduled for December second. The old fire station property on Church Street has been approved by the ZBA for two new three-story mixed-use buildings, which is fun and interesting. A filing has been submitted for a cell tower on Ball Street, which might provide, um, opportunities for town fire and police communications. A joint ZBA and planning board meeting will be held to review potential zoning amendments, so I'll again talk to Amy and see how many we're talking about. Senior Center Veterans Day celebration, of course, was a success. Uh, the Friends hosted their country fair on Saturday, November twenty-second. I heard that was great. The senior center director is developing an online newsletter, so that's, you know, that's going better than she thought, which is good. Police Department, um, they'll be donating coats to veterans, the town will inform residents once, um, the coats arrive. It's, they pick them up from Gillette Stadium, I, they had this big thing going. Uh, Department of Public Works, sign proofs for various town buildings have been received, these are funded, these were funded through ARPA. Whitney Street Bridge will close Tuesday, December ninth, Barefoot Road will carry the detour traffic and is expected to be busy during the closure. Streetlight conversions to LED will begin in January.
Stephanie, can you, the, um, the bridge closure, this Whitney Street?
Yep, December ninth.
Are there gonna be signs warning people?
Oh, yeah, of course. Yeah.
No, I mean in advance, like tomorrow.
Yep, okay, let me just.
Right? I mean, people need to plan.
I imagine, right?
Yeah, I'm sure, I just.
It's also online posts, but that's not gonna reach everybody.
Yeah, okay. Um, the DPW director participated in Storytime at the library, reading Trashy Town, it was, I guess it was well-received, the kids loved it.
I gotta get that.
Good video or not?
I said that, no, there wasn't. Fire, on December eleventh, the department will host an incident command training with the state to strengthen our emergency response processes among staff. So all of us will be there. Health and Human Services, the Econno Lodge Shelter is expected to close by January following the state's decision to limit shelter areas of greatest need. One Jenkins Streets is in the process of being demolished due to safety concerns. Accounting, the department is actively participating in the annual audit, which has been progressing smoothly, a draft report is expected soon. Northborough Media, the library AV buildout is complete, the server relocation to Town Hall is on schedule with all equipment received. Final coordination with Charter and Verizon is underway. Um, a food pantry informational video highlighting the location is in production, because I guess people can't find our, our food pantry.
And then there's the other.
It's, um, like Pier Street, like behind.
It's in that building that kind of sits down, right across from that memorial.
Yeah.
So it's hard, yeah.
But there's, there's two, it's the Northborough Food Pantry in the front.
There's a Veterans one at the Legion as well.
There's a Veterans one at the Legion as well, is that?
No, but there's.
And the Friends fridge is a different spot, right?
It's right at the same place, no, the Friends fridge is at the food pantry, it's just outside.
Oh, okay, that's good. Northborough Media livestreamed the Thanksgiving football game, um, so, I don't know if I told you guys this yet, but this is part of our goals, like economic development, but, um, Northborough Media and I are starting Discover Northborough, so it'll be like, I think I told you, like, I always watch Chronicle, but I love it. So I'll go into the businesses, and I'll just say, hey, you know, what do you do here? How'd you get started, blah, 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 and we'll do like a little series, so people can tune in.
And you get to taste everything?
Not all the rest. Oh, my God, I'm gonna be like.
That's how they do Chronicle.
You'll be like, Steph, stop with the discover. GLP-1 drugs are not offered anymore. Anyway, um, so, I'm excited to do that, but what was my point on that? Oh, shoot, I was gonna say.
Northborough Cable, you're going to do a.
Yeah.
Discover Northborough.
Oh, okay, but we have to be careful, um, for instance, because Charter and Verizon, they have a contract with, you know, us for our cable, so they can't, we have to make sure that they can't advertise pricing, or, you know, try to sell per se anything, it's just basically how they're, you know, why they, what they do in their business, why they love it, blah, 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 so that'll be fun. Library, community reading events continue, Dana was there, uh, reading his book, he didn't tell me which book he read, though. Oh, I think he said several. The library director has applied for thirty laptops through the state's mass broadband grant program, the request includes assistive software and charging cart to support the workforce development, so basically, we will, um, lend out, you know, laptops to people that need them, and, and there's zero cost to the town, I, I asked her that, but you'll see it in the, um, forms, the grant forms. Town Clark's still working on the codification. Recreation, the Be Well, um, event committee met, and to discuss funding needs for, you know, that big end-of-the-year event for the schools, and St. Obane contributed five thousand dollars, which was half of the amount needed, and, so they were very, very, um, happy about that and appreciative. The department is seeking an additional cosponsor to fully fund the program.
This question, so, what, what hearing, St. Obane's hearing for tomorrow?
The building.
Where is that?
No, that was, this is, it already happened, I think, the twenty-two thousand square.
The public hearing scheduled for December second.
Oh, sorry, wait, where?
Who's the hearing body?
Sorry, what section are you on?
Planning and Development, page one of, it's, uh, it says St. Obane is advancing its application for a twenty-two thousand square foot addition, with a public hearing scheduled for December second.
Okay, well, then it's tomorrow.
Probably before the planning board.
Before the planning boards, they, they meet tomorrow?
Land Board, shoot, yeah, hopefully that doesn't, the snow doesn't cancel anything.
I'm sure you have your remote.
Yeah, oh, actually, they are fully remote.
They meet remote.
And, um.
Yeah.
So they, they made the decision to move forward?
Yeah.
Do we have anything to discuss at all, or?
They haven't come back to me, so I haven't reached out.
Okay, wasn't sure.
I'm just leaving it.
Yeah.
And that's, uh, yeah, I was gonna ask, that's what they have been talking about, right? That, that's what they're.
They're tracking on their schedule?
Yeah.
Yep. I haven't heard anything.
Cool.
Yeah, and that's it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone in remotely wanting to offer public comment?
I don't think so.
Help me out, does anybody see anything? Okay, future agenda items, so we know that our next meeting, we will be meeting with the legislators, has that been confirmed?
Yes, absolutely.